I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Before we start, I'd like to welcome our Area D Director, Mr. Rowley-Russell. Welcome.
Thank you.
First, we'd like to have a motion to adopt the December 12th Agenda as presented. There is an amendment to the Agenda which I would be putting forward under Area 4B, under arising topics for regional discussion. May I have a mover please? Councilor Ross, second. Councilor Hammond, all in favor? So may I have a motion to adopt the amendment? Motion. All in favor? So carried. A quick reminder that after this meeting, we will be having an in-camera following the committee of the whole meeting, and also, we will present our long service awards. Moving along to our registered criticians and delegations, our first delegation will be Ann Gordon from the Grand Forks, COPA 62, RE, the Snowbirds Air Show. And it's regarding the 2017 potential air show event, The Snowbirds. Recommendation, as council receives for information, the presentation from Ann Gordon regarding 2017 potential air show event, The Snowbirds. May I have a mover please? Councilor Tripp, second. Councilor Thompson, welcome. Good morning.
Am I ready?
You're already ready.
Alright. Good morning, Your Worship, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There have been, since I put this presentation together, there's been great confirmation that the Snowbirds are coming. They'll be here on Tuesday in the afternoon, and the show on Wednesday afternoon, and then leave on Thursday morning. So there's some of the changes to the wording in this presentation. So, on behalf of the Grand Forks Flying Club, COPA 62, we would request that you join in hosting -- Okay. Not doing so good with the presentation. Ah, here we go. Okay, we request that the city council join us in hosting the Snowbirds Air Show in July by allowing us at the time to have full control of the airport, as well as cooperation of the airport staff to prepare the site to the safety standards required by the Snowbirds Air Show organizers. This will be for approximately a week prior to the air show. And this is in order to have, and join with the city in celebrating the 150th anniversary of Canada's birthday. So that we have to prepare in advance a great many items. So it'll probably be the same as it was when we hosted them in the year 2000. How do I go to the next one here? Okay, okay, here we go. So the reason is to celebrate the birthday, and we, in order to join with the city in this milestone in conjunction with other plans. And to prepare the event, as I said, there's so many details to take care of. The actual organizers do publish a very detailed handbook of their requirements, and it is for the safety not only of people watching them, but for safety of the pilots themselves. And so that we have quite a list of things that are proposed. Mayor Conrad, did you distribute the cost-benefit sheet that I sent to you?
I didn't receive the sheet.
Sorry, Mayor Conrad, we received an air show cost estimates.
In a weekly summary?
We did it in the weekly summary, but I didn't.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay. It must have gone through the COGRF or something.
Okay. To prepare for this event, as I said, many details are required. I have been in touch with the Snowbirds themselves. Snowbird number 10 is the organizer, and he is from Ottawa. And he is giving me all the information I need so that the show will go through safely. And he has definitely been very complimentary with the way that we're handling it thus far. And so I would say that the council in 2000 did approve monetary support for this event, and we are doing the same here. We would like the city as co-host, just like any other co-host or host, certain amount of financial obligations and requirements. And so we are requesting $15,000 to help us with the list of expenses that I might outline and send to council members. This could be part of your ongoing 2017 budget. And last time we had the show here, we had approximately 10, at least 10,000 people come to Grand Forks to showcase how we do things, and it was highly successful. I think a couple of our members, councillor, you were part of that, were you there?
I was here, 2000.
You were?
I was.
Yes, councillor Thompson was here, councillor Crogg was here, and I'm not sure anybody else was at the time. But everybody enjoyed it, and there was a great response by the merchants downtown. They opened their stores, they had sales, they had street events after the show. The show will be approximately 4:00 in the afternoon, which is a good time because as a pilot, you have to make sure that the temperature is favorable for flying, and if it's too hot, then it's not a good idea to be flying. Well, the Snowbirds are a little bit different. They've got preparations for that event, but again, their safety is very, very important to us. We have an ideal airport to host them. They had no problem with it the last time they were here. So the city will, I believe, there's been some indication on Facebook that they're coming, and so we are certainly asking for support from the city. And we would like the confirmation on the approval committed to provide the air show, and we are prepared to carry out all requirements to host them. And we would enjoy very much the reapproval of council with a motion to go ahead and provide the funding for us. I do have other pictures here, I think. There you go, there's the show. That's what you'll see. Any other pictures that came up on the presentation? Oh, here we go. That's what they look like, and here are the Snowbirds greeting the crowd. And they were very receptive to people coming in. And there they are. And you can see it all there, a car park on the south side of the runway. So there is the opportunity to be hosts, and if you want me to go through the expense sheet, I will, so that you can understand.
May I just reiterate, I did send that forward. My apologies, it was under information on email, and I did forward it immediately. I wasn't sure which one you were talking about, but I do have it with the hotel costing and everything, and all of council received it, so did staff.
Okay. So if there are any questions, please go ahead and ask me, I'll try and answer them.
Councilor Hammond.
Yeah, I think this is extremely exciting for Grand Forks. A couple of concerns, one is that it's on a Wednesday afternoon, so in the past, drew in about 10,000 spectators, and I'm wondering if on the last time they were here, was it a weekend or a weekday?
Weekday.
Weekday? Okay. At 4:00, people can close up their business earlier now. The other thing is, you've asked for a request of 15,000. If you receive enough funding or donations throughout this campaign to raise money up until that time, will that request be reduced from 15,000? And has the Canada 150 grant been applied for?
I'm applying -- Can you hear me, everybody?
Cameras can't. Cameras can't. Cameras in the back can't.
This one here?
Yeah. There you go.
Okay. There is a number of funding opportunities that the birthday is putting forward. I am applying for all of possible funding that we can get, but usually it is, how much funding do you have, and we can match it. I'm going through the Phoenix Foundation, and hopefully I'll go to Area D and see if I can get a grant from them, because Area D will enjoy the show at the same time. And I just listed the temporary things that I believe to do. The most expensive will be the hotel. I've been able to get a discount from the Ramada for the hotel costs. That still will run, it's about 15, oh, 5,000 with tax, maybe more. But that is our obligation as a host, is to provide them with a hotel. There are other opportunities to host them, and so we will try and arrange that, but again, having six months' lead time is essential. I will get the, there is an organizational package. I read it on the email, I'll try and get it printed out, and it is about 39 pages, but it does encompass all the requirements if you were doing an air show in a big city, as well as a smaller one. There are certain concessions that they make for the smaller communities that can provide a lot of things that the big cities can't. And we're going to try and get the air cadets, because let's face it, air cadets that can see the Snowbirds, what a thrill for an up-and-coming pilot to be able to see the Snowbirds. But they have certain restrictions, and they are, they have to abide by for that sake.
Councilor Tripp, Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, in looking through this air show cost estimates, I actually was pretty impressed with how much they are actually contributing themselves, and I guess, so that really keeps the cost down for the smaller communities?
Yes. That's what I really think. The hotel cost is the biggest expense, and Dave Ray from the Ramada's been extremely kind to give us a discount.
I know all the hard work and effort you put into it in 2000, when you brought the Snowbirds in. And it was just wonderful, and I commend you for taking it on again this year, and really wish you every success.
And your support is essential.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what the rest of councils already said. I think it's a great event for Grand Forks. I have no problem supporting it, 15,000, and it seems to meet all the requirements of our grant-in-aide policy. I think today we're just receiving it for information as per our protocol. We'll bring it forward on another agenda to be approved, as staff, is that the procedure?
I would recommend to council that we make a motion to consider this and discuss it further at another meeting, but the recommendation to consider this application. Councilor Thompson?
I would be pleased to make that motion, Your Worship.
Do I have a second, Councilor Butler? All in favor? Motion is carried. Do I have any other questions?
Have you considered building those people out instead of hotel costs?
Not available.
Not available?
Yeah. They have strict rules and regulations about building them.
Gentlemen in the second room.
Hi, almost, good day, Your Worship and councillors. I'm Nigel James and live in Grand Forks. Together with the Snowbirds, I wonder if they could bring their simulator for entertainment?
I'd like to.
Gentlemen in the back room.
Worship, Lieutenant Frank with the Royal Canadian Air Cadets. I've been asked by Major Di Biagio to stop by and provide any information we can about the air cadets. And the air cadets are very interested in being involved. We're looking at all elements of cadets from Cootenies coming over, possibly up to 50 cadets would come to see the Snowbirds, because it'd be quite inspirational for them, and I'd like to meet them, and it's a great opportunity to see them. The air cadets would provide assistance wherever possible, but as Mrs. Gordon has said, we do have restrictions. We can't do traffic control or that sort of thing, but we can provide a lot of assistance in directing people around town and at the airport. And we'd be looking at setting up a camp for the visiting cadets, and looking at possibly having breakfast with the Snowbirds if possible, and providing that sort of thing. The Trail Flying Club has offered to organize flights, or free flights as part of the COPA, which Grand Forks Air Club is quite familiar with, Flying Club. And this is for youth, that they would provide flights free of charge. And the air cadets does have two flight simulators, that if that would be of interest, we could set them up and provide people some opportunity to test their flight simulation. It's quite an interesting little program. And I'd be willing to answer any other questions. Major Di Biagio has asked that if we can continue to be involved somehow so that we can provide information and receive information back as to what we can do and what's happening, would be much appreciated. And I could provide my business card to you if you wish.
Yes, I'd like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have actually been in communication with Major Di Biagio.
We still are in communication.
I talked to him.
Thank you for your presence this morning.
Any other questions, or are we all good to go?
Can I get a ride?
Did I tell you when they're going to arrive?
No, I said, can I get a ride?
Oh! Well, I can always ask. I'm number one on the list. Yeah, it's a big thrill to be able to take the G-force. But anyway, we'll see how that goes. There should be, if it is the same as last time, there will be one Snowbird here as the coordinator. It may be one I've been talking to, I'm not sure. They come to visit the airport to see if everything is up to standard, and ask any questions, perhaps tour the area, and so that will be just one Snowbird. They probably will come about March or April, so we have to have everything done by that time, everything secured. And still, there is a lot of work to do. So I do thank you, council members, Mayor Conrad, for this tremendous support. I am just blown away. I'm really thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, for coming by, and again, as I mentioned in my emails, a very exciting event, and congratulations for all the hard work that you're doing for this, for the city, and it's going to be a great event, I know, won't it?
Yes, well, we'll take the merchants and get them involved. And last time we had it, they had a truck that came with all kinds of souvenirs. I don't know, were you, Chris, did you remember that truck with all the souvenirs?
Yes.
Say goodbye. I'm not sure that that's going to come this year, but this is the kind of thing that they were selling. All this, of the time where they were going, and with the insignia on the front. Yeah, it's very attractive. But whether they will have that again, I don't know. I'll have to ask, because they need volunteers as well to provide those souvenirs from people that want to fly. So anyway, if there are any more questions?
It's never been worn. It's going up for auction.
Any more questions?
Councilor Thompson.
Please encourage them to bring their truck.
Well, it has to come separately. Now, there is one thing, the morning of the departure, they will be extremely busy. They did indicate that they don't, they're not able to entertain any events the morning that they leave. So that there's a lot of things to do, because they go in through here to Fort St. John. And having been in Fort St. John, that is a beautiful trip, but it's quite a distance from here, but with that type of airplane, distance is no problem. So thank you for your attention, and thank you again. Oh, just in passing, when will I be able to find out whether the funding has been approved?
We'll try to put it on our closest agenda that comes up. We'll discuss it then, and probably get the response back to staff, we'll get back to you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you once again, Ann, for coming this morning and making such a wonderful presentation and for taking your time.
I hope everybody understood the obligations, et cetera, and I know if I'm, anytime I see them on, I always get even more excited.
So all in favor of the, to receive? Our next item is Item 3B, which is the Sunshine Valley Women's Institute. Subject matter, request to remember the importance of the sidewalk on 72nd Avenue in front of the Silver Kettle and onto extra foods. The recommendation is that the committee of the whole receives for information the request from the Sunshine Valley Women's Institute regarding their request to remember the importance of the sidewalk on 72nd Avenue in front of Silver Kettle and onto extra foods. May I have a mover please? Councilor Tripp, Councilor Butler. Do we have, good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Your Worship and Councilors. Thank you for hearing me once again. No, I just a gentle reminder that we are still kind of pushing for the sidewalk. It really is a necessity in the area. Now, again, I see two new young families that have moved in, and they definitely have more than one child. And with the seniors, again, it's just living next door in the Parkside Villas. I see it day after day, how much it is needed, and I really ask that when the budget comes up, which is shortly, I guess, that you come across with the monies for this project. I thank you.
May I just mention that it is still a line item in our budget. Right now, we are looking at a couple of potential investments through contractors that might be participating in this sidewalk project, and that's one of the reasons that the city on its own, because of the cost involved, if it can be alleviated to a certain degree by subsidiary investment, then that's the direction we're going, but it is a line item in our budget, and will probably be one in the future budget, too. So it is in consideration, it's not an issue that has been dropped.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Butler. And then Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a line item on the budget as long as I've been on council, and there was a motion made by previous council that if a developer hadn't stepped forward by a certain date, and I don't remember the exact date of that motion, but it has already passed, that council would come forward and do that project. And I would strongly encourage this council to push for that project to start as soon as possible in the new year. I'm 100% in support. I think it's definitely needed, not only for the residents of Silver Kettle, but also the gables and people walking along there. I don't see any developers coming forward in the near future from what I've seen, and I think it's about time we move forward on that project.
Councilor Ross.
I just want to reiterate what councillor Butler has just said. It's been important for us to keep our roads in good shape because of the bumps in the roads, and drivers complain about the potholes, but I think it's even more important for the health of our community, our seniors and our young families, that we get them out and keep them mobile, and keep them safe while they are doing those essential things like walking. So I would also like to make this a priority. I don't want it to be on the line item again next year. I'm embarrassed if it is.
Councilor Trump.
Yes, and I'll throw my weight in behind the other two councillors, Sir councillor Ross and councillor Butler. I too believe that it is an important project. It is something that affects quite a few people in that area, and of course, seniors have, you know, an extra mobility issue with the roads, and I know going along there with the snowplows, that there's just nothing really for them to walk on other than just on the roads, and that definitely is a safety concern. So I would also very much support this project moving forward.
Councilor Thompson.
I agree that it's an extremely important project for the area, but having said that, we have to look at our budget, what we can afford. If we were to do this particular project with something else that might be more, not important, but requiring more immediate attention, and so, I mean, this is going to be referred to our budget discussions, our capital budget discussions, and I appreciate that your annual or sometimes semi-annual reminder that you've been asking for this for a very long time, and believe me, it is not a forgotten, a forgotten item, but as the mayor said, there are, is the potential of developers developing in the area who could cost share in some of that expense, thus saving our taxpayers some funding that could be reallocated to something else. So just please bear with us, be patient. It is definitely something that we're looking at.
And may I just echo the fact that it's not just a sidewalk being put in, there are subsidiary issues that go with it, like drainage, et cetera. So there's a lot of cost issues that have to be addressed, and studies have to be put on first before this moves forward. So the initial cost is sometimes very simple to say, put a sidewalk in, but there's a lot of other factors that entail in this, which a lot of times the public are not aware of.
No, we're very aware for sure, and we will keep reminding.
All I ask is do not be dismal about it. We are still looking at it. It's not something that's been shelved, as we say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So all, unless there's any other questions? All in favor of the motion to receive?
I just have a question.
Councilor Butler.
I just have a question. I don't know if it's for staff or for council, but as the presenter said, this has been an issue for years and years now, and previous council has made a motion and put a timeline on developers coming forward before council moves on this project. And from what I've heard from two other members of council, we do want to move on this project. So how long is this council prepared to wait for a developer to come forward before we do make it a priority?
Councilor Hammond.
I don't think anybody's denying the need for it. We're not going to see any action happen on that, probably until the spring anyway, because you can't do it before then. We do have two developers in the area, two lands have been purchased, and we're not sure on their development plans at this time, so as has been discussed, and we've discussed this almost on a regular schedule, like every briefing we have, this sidewalk comes up, and we're trying to see how we can link it in with developments that are in the works right now. So until, like, we have Tim Hortons that's in the process right now. So we're looking to see where they're putting their sidewalks, so that we're not duplicating it on both sides of the road. So as, nothing's going to happen before the spring anyway, I think you can rest assured that something will be happening by then.
Thank you.
And may I just remind everyone that, as councillor Butler has stated, it was previous council, so council of today will make the decisions on that.
I hope it's decided by the time of the next election. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder. Okay, moving on to Item 3C, which is the Grand Forks Community Trails Society. Subject matter, information report on trail development in the city and surrounding region. Recommendation, committee of the whole receives for information the report from the Grand Forks Community Trail Society regarding trail development in the city and surrounding region. May I have a motion, please? Councilor Tripp, Councilor Butler. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councillors. Is it working? I don't need it, do I? I never did. Good morning. My name is Chris Woslam. I am the current president of the Grand Forks I am the current president of the Grand Forks Community Trail Society. I reside in the Regional District, 9125 North Fork Road. And I am pleased to come to you this morning to give a report on the development of trails and a report back on three of our major initiatives that we've taken this year and to answer any questions that you may have about that development. I did put a few things on your desk and I will refer to them as I speak. And I'm pleased, don't be afraid to interrupt, okay? I don't have a very good train of thought. So I can probably manage any questions you have as I go along. I put on your desks the Visions map that I presented to council in spring 2014. Many of you weren't on council at that time. So I want to make sure you've got it. You've got those lovely drawers in those desks. Stick it in there. Okay? I also put, and will refer to in my presentation, our new Trails Guidebook, okay? And I also put on your desk a city map. I have it in my hand, but of the Grand Forks, of the city of Grand Forks, that we're sure. Anyhow, to get on. Our society there has three objectives. We are trying to develop and promote trails, to enhance social and recreational opportunities that trails provide, and to create trails that are accessible to all citizens. You see in front of you, I hope this works, the Parapelkum bench that the society requested that the city install on the first level of the Observation Mountain Trail. That was installed, I believe, in the spring of this year and dedicated to one of our longstanding citizens, Peter Parapelkum. I refer to it as the Spirit Bench because the dedication on it talks about community spirit. Trails are an integral part of our community. And we are really working hard to create those trails that highlight the beauty of Grand Forks. Now, in this... Never mind. Let's go. One more. What do I have to point it at? No, I went too far. Got to go back. Darn. It's much better on my laptop. Thanks, Daniel.
It's saying it's working.
I've missed a slide, Diane. Is there somebody there with manual control?
You have to make the slide noise, or the change...
Shrink the presentation. That'd be good.
Yeah, no, it jumps way too much.
The next slide, I'm sure it will come up here if somebody presses the forward arrow on the screen, is about the mapping project that we undertook last year. Last winter, actually. That's not it. You did, yeah. You skipped a slide.
There's only six slides.
Yeah, there's only six slides. That's right. Can you go to the split screen view and let's see the...
That is slide number two.
Okay. All right, well... Okay, this is the... Thank you. There it is. There it is. Thank you. Can we go to the beginning of that slide, if possible? Because I would like to see it without the text.
It's not loading that slide properly.
This is like teaching school. It's always the A.V. adventure. Okay, well, I'll speak to it. If you can sort of struggle on and remove the text so that we can see the map. What the Grand Forks Community Trail Society did is that in 2008, we created a Trails Guide. And it was very popular, but eventually it went out of print. And there was a great deal of demand for a new one. So we worked really hard last year in developing a new Trails Guide. That is this document that you see in front of you. In the middle of the Trails Guide is this map that shows the 18 trails that were featured in this document. Okay? That's by no means all the trails around Grand Forks. But our goal was to create a booklet that featured 18 trails that you could walk to and access from basically downtown Grand Forks. Okay? So this map, which I worked on with Brian McAndrew for some time, for some time, has become not just the backbone of this booklet, but it's also the backbone of the city map that you have in front of you that was put out by the boundary museum this year. So we have really tried our very best to integrate knowledge of trails and these 18 core trails right into all the literature that's available in the city. This map is also available at the kiosk, at the two major kiosks right now, at Roxol and at the Black Train Bridge. And we feature it on kiosks on our trail system. And we're hoping that as the city updates its kiosks, both at the Riverside Meadows Trail, Cemetery, Sprang of Bridge, Observation Mountain Trail, that this new trail map will become part of those pieces of infrastructure. Not only was the Trails Map in print form, but if you've got one of these pesky devices and you go to GFtrails.ca, you'll automatically be booted to the mobile version of the map. Okay? So, you know, you get a little blue dot tells you where you are and where the trail is. We also have a webpage version of it as well. So we tried to make it available as many formats as we can and tried to keep it as a core document in our city. We're working on updating all the other trailhead signs over the course of this coming winter and then next spring. We'll probably be coming back to council in the spring with a prototype of that design. And some of you who've walked around Grand Forks have seen the old trailhead signs that are posted already. And we just would like to update them with the new maps and make them consistent with the new trails that we have developed. Some of these trails are new. Now, let's see. Does the pointer work? No.
Yeah, that should work. Just hold it.
Okay, Daniel, where you go. So some of these trails are new. Actually, the trails are not new. Putting them in the public domain is new. The next slide is one of those trails. Can we, let's keep our fingers crossed and go to the next slide. Yikes. Can we go right back? There, thank you. Okay. Just can I take a quick poll of council? How many councillors have been here? Put your hand up. Okay, thank you. All right, this is the dam site, the Grand River Dam site overlooking the Grand River. I once took the CAO of the city and their chief electrical engineer to this site. Scared the heck out of them. You can cross-country ski in there. Maybe in one time it was drink, you could put a small electrical plant back in. Because this was where the earthen dam was. What you're standing on here, what you're looking at, that platform, that is the old CPR rail grade. Above it is another rail grade, the old Great Northern Rail Grade. Two railroads cross the river at this site. Below us and to the right, to the left, rather, is the remains in the river, the old earthen trestle, the old earthen dam that created Smelter Lake. This year, the society has installed that bench there. And it's featured as part, I think it's Trail 6 in our Trails Guide. It's a very easy walk. It's great ski. We have repaired the trail. And what's really significant here... What's really significant is that we were able to take this trail, which was actually public property on Crown Land, and get it designated an official recreational trail. And after we got that little bit of paperwork done, we attached that specific rail bed to our stewardship agreement with the province. We have a stewardship agreement with the province to steward the Trans-Canada Trail, basically from Eagle to Grand Forks and from Grand Forks to Cascade West. And now we have in that stewardship agreement the responsibility and the right to maintain this trail. Now, those of you who know the geography of Grand Forks know that we are laced with heritage rail beds, many of which are disrepair. And to create a trail to getting those heritage structures into a stewardship agreement where they can receive provincial support is an important step. We built, we improved that trail this year. We built the Lookout Bench. And we are looking forward to more improvements on it, including educational signage. And I really do invite councillors, if you haven't gone there, this is a real bit of Grand Forks history that you do need to see. It's hard to say you understand the community until you actually stand there. Anyhow, going on. Here's something else that we built this year. This is the new rail bed, which we call the Lower North Fork Trail. Now, the society, we are, maybe it represents me slightly schizophrenic. We have 34 kilometers of Trans-Canada Trail that we steward. 17 kilometers, we have to successfully declare non-motorized. And I'm going to talk about that next. But the other 17 kilometers are a motorized trail. That means that we share it with all motorized users of our recreational vehicles. Consequently, there seems to be lots of money available for non-motorized trails, but there's not a lot of money for motorized trails. And thanks to Director Russell, who had the courage to see how that we were serious about trying to share this, awarded us a $25,000 gas tax grant to create this trail. This trail's a bit of an experiment. We tried to put down a surface that was wide and safe and could be used for a multi-use trail and it could bear that use. That is, will it wear, will it stand on multi-use trails? That means, you know, dirt bikes, KTVs, snowmobiles, and equestrians and bicyclists and people with strollers. So we're really trying to create a trail that's accessible to all users. It's a bit of an experiment and we're waiting to see two things. Avoiding to see, A, that the trail surface holds up, and B, that everybody plays nice on it. If it does, if those two things are combined, we hope to extend that first 2.2 kilometers from Colshue Road to Eagle Ridge to extend it up the North Fork Trail. But important, besides building the surface, and you know, I think you have to appreciate that putting a new surface on a 2.2 kilometers of trail and then doing that for just $25,000 was no mean trick. So we established partnerships in order to do it with EMCON, who were very generous in their support of the project. And I'm hoping they're going to come back and play some more. The GFATV Club and of course, the surrounding neighborhoods. This, Councilor Tripp was asking me about grooming for cross-country skiing. We are hoping, because it's of its width, it's wide, it's going to receive a great deal of snow. And yeah, we are hoping to be able to groom it to track it for Nordic skiers. It's wide enough that you should be able to get snowmobiles, horses, Nordic track skiers all in one place. So, and it's flat. So it's pretty easy. And we do hope to extend this surface in 2017, but we'll wait to see. Okay, here we go, Diane. Here we go. Okay. Now, the other 17 kilometers of our organization, and this is kind of an iconic picture of it. Most of you will recognize this as the Nursery Trestle. You can see the gas line hung up from it, from the upper part of it. You can see the swimmer there. And the informal or illegal or I don't know how to say it, jumping deck that's been built, usually by neighboring citizens, parents, to enjoy that trail. This, we are very proud of. This trail represents about six years of work. We call it, the society has called it the Kettle River Heritage Trail because we just, we need to come up with a name for the project. This is the one we came up with. It is the Trans-Canada Trail, also known as the Columbia Western Spirit Trail. At one point, it was called the Terracine Trail. I have a very cynical theory that the last person who shows up with money gets to name the trail. And there's a truth to that. We've been working since 2010 to bring an upgrade to the Trans-Canada Trail between Grand Forks and Christine Lake. We really do believe that we can create active transportation corridors within our communities to the boundary. And we have lobbied for six years for this. Originally, we wanted to pave it all. And we worked at that. And I want to thank the city because the city has invested in this vision, too. Together with the city and the province, we paved the waterfront trail, sometimes called the Roxol Trail, in 2013. And that involved major partners, the city and the province. Part of the trail is on city land. Part of it's on Crown Land. Part of it was, came about because of a land swap between Roxol and the city. And the parking lot, for example, that has been created there by Roxol with help from the city and the kiosk created by Roxol. So that first part was paved. Then, together with the province and the regional district, we redecked the Nursery Trestle. The trestle there that you see in front of you now got its second decking, this time with three-inch treated wood so that I won't have to worry about it again, that's for sure. And add, made the trestle much safer for all users, including especially equestrians because this is, again, an all-purpose trail. Then we, the province sent us a letter in 2014, which basically said that unless trails were designated non-motorized, they no longer had the interest in funding improvements. And so that's when we started with the process of getting the trail designated non-motorized. And we had the support of a broad spectrum of the society, of the community. Many of you were at the meeting last December where that was discussed with the public and was able to go forward. We have the support of the Grand Forks ATV Club and other trail users, too, to create that designation. The primary purpose of the designation, of course, was to attract funding. And we did successfully. The regional director, again, was courageous. They gave us $100,000 of his gas tax money to create this vision. And the province said, okay, we'll put up another $100,000. And we applied for a rural dividend grant for another $134,000. We jumped through those hoops, but we were unsuccessful. But what was successful and what was nice, I guess more than nice, is that the province still was committed to the vision and had successfully decided to move forward with the project despite not getting the rural dividend grant. So together with the province and the regional districts... So, together with the province and the regional districts, we have contracted major improvements to be completed by May 31st, 2017. I have brought, and I was going to leave with staff, this is the tender drawings for the project. The project now has a value of $437,000. This is a major investment in trails by the province and the regional district in our region. This was, this project's going to benefit not just your city and the community of Grand Forks, but we really hope it's going to benefit the whole region. It's going to benefit, first, the citizens, who are going to have easier access to a trail. It'll be paved to Whitehall Road from thereafter, from Whitehall to Cascade. The crash will be taken up and refurbished. New gates will be put in, new signage. A lot of that, the details are available in the tender drawing of this trail. So, we're very, we're very proud of this. We see a lot of work ahead of us with, on this project. It's going to be substantially completed by May 31st. There will be public meetings during the winter with the neighbors and the public about it. We are going to have to, once it's completed, put in some education, we'd love to put in some educational signage, because after all, it goes through two provincial parks. And we'd also like to have a celebration in the summer of its official opening, and we've got to look forward to doing that in June, July, next year. Marvel that in the spring. So, that represents a real step forward for the entire region. And one of the things we're hoping to do, many of you have driven, I'm sure, from Grand Forks to Christine Lake, and have never stopped, because there's nowhere to stop. There is no official access point for this trail off of Highway 3. There's Collins Road with a nice little sign on it that says, please go up to the next place, which is the Boothman's entrance to it, which is, the highways wants to close because it's not, it's not adequate. Where MOTI wants to put official access is at Gilpin Creek, which is, yeah, and many of you, as many of you know that, you know, you have a highway, you have, you have a major highway right through downtown Grand Forks, right? It's always, and it's not easy being, living with MOTI, because they have their own timeframe and their own priorities, and they do need to be constantly engaged and reminded. Anyhow, we're hoping that we are going to be able to get an official highways access at Gilpin Creek for this beautiful new trail that will exist by the end of May 2017. So, those are our three projects that we were, I'd like to report on this year. In 2014, I did, to the council of the day, presented this vision out, that many of, some of the staffs still have on their, on their walls, and it was basically suggestions on, if you were about to do something, then maybe you can improve this trail while you're at it. And some of it has come to pass, like the Kettle River Heritage Trail Phase 2, well, here it comes, okay? Redecking the Nursery Trestle, we did that. The Kenmore Connection, no, not going to happen. Stairs at the 68th Avenue Bridge, well, you know, that might happen, yeah. We look at your beautiful stairs that you have down to Sands Beach or Corners Beach, you know, the natural rock stairs, really nice, easy, cheap. Stairs and underpass at the Central Avenue Bridge, this is my favorite. I don't know if you've ever gone in, have you ever driven into Princeton from the east? Well, if you have, it went over a bridge. Underneath that bridge, there's a paved trail. You can hardly see it from the highway, but it's there. Well, think about what a paved trail underneath that Central Avenue Bridge would do to connect a restaurant on one side, right? With an empty business building on the other side, Riverside Drive. It would really connect your downtown core to Riverside, which is one of the most beautiful communities in the community, the beautiful neighborhoods in the community. Anyhow, that's my favorite. Just, you know, I don't, you know, if you're, that is your bridge. So, you know, if you ever get around to doing something with it. The Otuvation Mountain Trail, well, we've worked on that. Riverside Meadows Trail, well, that's something I sort of got hung up, I'm waiting for that to finish. There is, the plan is to put a new surface there. The CPR Trail, well, we got that, but if you ever feel like you want to build a suspension bridge across the downsight there, let us know. The Prospect Drive Parking Lot, now, this is a real tricky one, you know, trails have that issue. Some of them are on public land, some of them are private land. Some of them start on public land, go through private land, come to public land, right? Well, Prospect Drive, I'm talking about Copper Ridge, right? I'm talking, I don't know if any of you have been up there to the end of Prospect Drive, I'm pretty sure David has, Chris has on your head, right? And basically, the land developer is allowing some kind of access, but not all access. There's big nasty signs and nasty gates. Meanwhile, the whole town goes up there. That's where you want to go to learn how to ski, though. Okay, you go, go to the end of Prospect Drive, take your skis off your vehicle, walk through the gate, you know, it's literally kilometers and kilometers of beautiful trail on private land.
I'll tell them you sent me.
Yeah. Do that. Okay. Public access to Saddle Latricks and Trails and the VVNE Trail, we've been working on that since 2014, and these new trails are beautiful and featured in our booklet. The Spraygate Bridge Parking Lot, the city did a beautiful job with that. It really, I know, I know you, you put it there for people on the river, but do you know that there's a beautiful trail system, many of which are abandoned heritage rail structures, that are accessible by that parking lot? The Cemetery Trail, wow, your staff is busy, is working on this. You've got that new cemetery, you've got the new kiosk in the cemetery there, overlooking the new wildlife, or the designated wildlife park, which is beautiful. It's one of the most beautiful places in the city, is the cemetery. I know you really have to be, you know, a lot of people don't even know that it's there, you know, but who walks in the cemetery? Well, it's actually quite beautiful. The deer do it. And of course, one thing that I really would like the city, if it can, and I was hoping they would do, when they worked on 68, the access trail from 68th Avenue, in the, 68th makes a, I think it's Kettle River Drive, and it makes a hard left, turns into 68, right? And the trail to the city park is this little mud track that goes steeply down a hill there, and that's actually the designated Trans-Canada Trail route. So, I was hoping the last time the guys worked on that corner, that that would get done. But anyhow, next time you work on it, like I say, put these maps in your drawers, in your desk, and maybe they'll, they'll come up next time. So, but today, we have special, specific requests of the city. We would like to have a city bench that matches the Parapalpian Bench at the top of the Otuvation Mountain, which our Trail Society would purchase. We buy the standard city bench, we love them, I think they, it, it really celebrates a beautiful view up there and a, a real feature that we have worked on. We're, we're asking the city to consider budgeting for the redecking of the Darrell Pre Trestle in 2017. You have, you've recently, you're working on that trestle, you're hanging the water lines from it, chalked off a little bit of the, of a lookout that was there. We've been trying to keep, patch the decking of that trestle. That trestle was decked in 2008 by the military on a budget that we did, and unfortunately, when that sort of thing happens, we put down untreated wood. So, we need to have that decking of the Darrell Pre Trestle. I, you know, it's your part of your budgeting process, the cost would be about $40,000. Put it in your works, see, see how it comes out, but start thinking about it. We're going to, we're going to put new trailhead signage, and I notice of interest that you're working on wayfaring signage in the city, that's wonderful, that's great. We certainly would like to be involved in that. Sounds like we're a little bit behind you on this one, as we look for new trailhead signage, where to, how to, in the city. We would like to include our new trails map and all your city kiosks, I mentioned that earlier, and again, thanks to the leadership of, from the regional district, in particular, Director Russell. The regional district has embarked on a Trails Master Plan, which will involve, Director Russell could perhaps give us more detail on that, a consultant, to consult with the public and come up with a, a, a master plan for not just non-motorized trails, but all trails in the regional district, to see them as valuable recreational infrastructure that can move the, move our region forward both economically and socially. And that, I hope the city, if there's public meetings that you, as individuals show up and participate in that Trails Master Plan, let them know what you would like to see, what your aspirations are. And the city, we want to thank the city for their continued maintenance of trails, whether it's the plowing of the Roxol Trail, the Black Tree Bridge Trail, whether it's the improvements you're making to, to trails and the kiosks that you're making, we really do congratulate the city on seeing how important trails are to your beautification of the city. And as, as the future unwinds and more money becomes available for this new phrase, active transportation, we encourage the city to apply for bike BC and other grants to improve those corridors within and above the city. And we'd stand ready to assist in any way we can with that type of leadership that the city would like to move forward on.
Chris, with all due respect, is it much longer?
No, we're done, I'm done. Thank you very much for your time. I do stand ready if there are any questions.
Councillor Ross.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. I'm a, I'm a trail user, and I've been on all of them, either on foot, bike, or on my cross-country skis. I do have some questions, but I'm going to talk to you about it later, because I know there's a, we have a big agenda today. I have a concern about sharing the trail.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. Chris, sorry to have this kind of short.
No problem, thank you. Short speech.
All in favor, you're received. Anyone opposed, so carry. Okay, now, we're moving on to item four, which is regional topics for discussion. Area D, first, for A, recommendation is for previous report to council regarding proposed Recreation Culture Committee of Council. Recommendation is committee that will receive councillor Budner's previous report of council regarding a proposed Recreation and Culture Committee of Council for discussion. Councillor Budner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, we talked about this at a previous meeting, and the information is before council. The point of bringing it forward today is just to discuss with the regional director input that he might have regarding this request. I know our CAO has requested that we take this to the board of the regional district. As the REC Commission is supposed to be reporting to the board of the regional district, our concern is just getting more recreational opportunities on the radar of the city. If that has to go through the regional district, then maybe that's the proper procedure, and perhaps, I know our regional director was maybe expressing some interest in having a representative on a committee if one was formed. Our concern, again, at the REC Commission is just that we don't have funds allocated to deal with extra programming opportunities, and we've seen some fall through the cracks so far. We had an opportunity to start up a gymnastics club in Grand Forks last year and fell short on some funding for that. We have an amazing teacher in Grand Forks who was willing to come forward and offer that program, and right now, we have kids that are going down to the States, on to a call bill, to do gymnastics, and it's unfortunate when we have someone in town that's so qualified and there is an interest for it. So, I'll just maybe turn it over. There's a couple of members of the REC Commission in the audience today, if council had any questions for them or for the regional director.
Director Russell, would you like to weigh in on this one?
Sure. I guess the one piece to, to make sure is clear to everybody is that the REC Commission as an entity that is, is supported by both the city and rural Grand Forks has a very specific mandate, and so that, and that mandate is only pertaining to recreation programming to the aquatic center and to the arena. And so, anything beyond that is outside the scope of that, that current structure. And so, the, this, you know, I don't think that I need to say much more than that, but, but beyond that, we don't have a good tool, neither with the city nor rural Grand Forks, to really address those broader recreational issues.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Yourship. The REC Department, do they not have the ability, Tom Spredow, to, to support administratively these other programs that are, are being offered, such as the gymnastics? It counts for another, but pardon?
I guess from my perspective, the challenge more is that where does the decision-making come from to move ahead with those kinds of projects? So, so right now, that's not appropriate. Those kinds of things are not within the mandate of the REC Commission. So, it's, where does the advisory body, who informs and guides elected decision-makers on those, those decisions? And where do those decisions go for conclusion?
Councillor Tripp, then Councillor Ross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sort of, it sort of aligns a little bit with what I was bringing forward under policy, I think it's 503, earlier on in the year, when I was talking about volunteer opportunities and looking at it from a budget perspective. So, I can see that there is some maybe cross-referencing happening here, and perhaps, you know, it's a conversation that we should have to try and figure out which body, which group, or if it's a, it's sort of a new group that might come together, to start looking at some of these things, because a lot of these things are volunteer opportunities as well, as well as recreational, and so I really think that there is a combined, you know, there's, they match.
Councillor Ross, then Councillor Thompson.
I don't know, I feel like I'm missing something here, because I don't, I, respectfully, I don't know what gymnastics has to do with culture, but, and when I look at the purpose and the, it talks about why parks and recreation are such public services, I absolutely, obviously agree. I always look at culture being something that ties in more with arts and heritage, and it's a totally different genre of interest, and often, a totally different group within our community that focuses on arts, heritage, and culture, such as the Boundary Museum, the Gallery 2, and that brings culture into it. And so, I, I just, I'm a little confused about, about, like, I look at, I look at the background documents, I look at the supporting evidence and the purpose and the statements that are made, and culture, just, I just think it's, I don't understand how it's going to be a part of recreation, and then we talked about gymnastics, it, how's, I don't, I don't really see this, how is this going to really make the Recreation Committee more viable? I think that culture is a part of heritage and arts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, one of the things that, you know, looking at this information and considering, you know, where would, you know, where would we fulfill this role within our community? The city doesn't offer the recreational services. The regional district offers some services at the regional district office, but we don't know what services the community really wants. We, we would be better informed to be able to at least have some sort of joint agreement somewhere made from the board or from our council, to be able to look at some sort of recreational master planning for the community, because we've got a hit, we've built a spray park with the, with the rotary. Council just expanded the pickleball courts because there was a need for the community. Those were reactive measures, it wasn't proactive in relation to going out to the community and seeing what types of services they really want. We're building trails, we're doing all kinds of things around that. We don't know if gymnastics are at the top of the list for the demographics of our community, or it could very well be beyond the top of the list. We, we might find that in our community, there is a big need for after-school care or something along. or something along those lines that could be looked at and we would want to understand that from our community. So I think a further discussion at our table here would be to discuss, you know, the, the opportunity to somehow get to some sort of recreational master planning input and then determine what that service would look like. Because the bylaw right now with the regional district, under bylaw is 927, it states that they will look after services for the aquatic center and arena. If we're going to go beyond that scope, we would probably want to have further discussions with the regional board about potentially expanding that, maybe asking the board to see if they would like to participate in some sort of recreation master plan in our area and then, and then explore the mechanism, how that would unfold. Especially with the, the idea behind this is there's, there's going to be a little bit of opportunity to, to look at the model that we operate this. Because whether this is the best route or there's another route that would make some sense. I think we would want to discuss that and see what options would be available for council.
Councilor Thompson, then Director Russell, and then Councilor Butler, and then the gentleman in the back.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, the bylaws that were attached, were all regional district bylaws. They are not our own bylaws, enacted by the councils of the city of Grand Forks. Secondly, the REC office under Tom Spredow and his staff, in addition to doing the aquatic center and the arena, I, I believe they booked parks for sporting events and the like. And I'm not just sure with other services that they offer. I can hear that there is a need for, for the discussions between the city and the regional district. And we would have to, you know, want to include the REC Commission as well. To see, again, to echo what our CIO said, what is being requested? What is currently being offered? What is lacking? And then if, if, if the need be, expand the requirements, again, through the, through the regional district. But working cooperatively together to ensure that whatever recreation services are needed, that we can, we can have a good look at it and, and provide that, rather than being reactive as we were at the pickle court.
Director Russell.
Just to be, to clarify, this is not a request that is coming from the regional district, nor is it a request coming from rural Grand Forks. This is, what you have in front of you here is a, a request for council to consider creation of a committee. There would be a council, a city of Grand Forks committee. And if such a thing, you know, this is not, this is not my, my notion. I think it might be a good idea for you, but this is a conversation for you to have. The REC Commission itself and the mandate of that is a very significant change. I would, I would second what the CIO's comments were, that there, this, the purpose, I think, is, is why this is coming to you, is to help give you some sense of what your priorities should be in terms of recreation planning and decision-making. If such a thing existed, I would certainly be coming to you saying it would make sense to, to have some input from the rural areas as well as the municipality. That being said, just to be clear, this is not a conversation at this point about changing the mandate for the REC Commission. And, and so if there is a desire to go to the regional district as the city of Grand Forks and as rural Grand Forks and ask at the regional district level to say, "Look, we want to engage in a new service", sure, but that's a very different process than what's in front of you at this point.
Hello, thanks, Mr. Mayor. My name's Deanigan, I am the one that's trying to spearhead the gymnastics program. And I have nothing to do with gymnastics, but so many people came to me as a member of the REC Commission, asking for this. So I thought, "Well, sure, I'll go out there and do it." And I've come, but nothing but roadblocks over something that's as simple as some kids enjoying some activities. So many of them are getting roped into these games and so many of these computers and I'm trying to do something a little different. And I get stumbling block after stumbling block. So I would like the city to consider a group, work in one stop shop and get it all put together so we can find the building, so we can find the resources needed. It's not about the money, it's about the people in this room that have the knowledge and the power and the authority to make these things happen. I did a post on Facebook and overnight, 62 people responded, which is just a small percentage. But that's still 62 people that are very interested in something, that are interested in a program. That, it's, it's not about the gymnastics, it's about a group of people wanting something and finding nothing but roadblocks and stumbling blocks. We have an opportunity with a group of so many people that enjoy recreation, that enjoy this training. And that's why we live here. I mean, our own CIO is big into softball and into sports. So he can add input to get more tournaments, to get more things. I know you're into trails, I know, Rowley, you're into different sports and different activities. I know a lot of people that I've had conversations with have led to recreation. The biggest problem is that no one is being the one person, the one group that's saying, "Okay, this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to get there." By having the councilors involved, then we can come here, get the information out, and then we can go to different people. So the CEO can be involved, we need this shovel, we need this done, we need this. So we have the opportunity to open doors. It's not about this big landfill of money, it's about communication with each group so we know where we stand. Because I tried to just get a simple gymnastics group together and I got nothing but roadblocks. I have a very educated gymnastics coach that's willing to do it, but she couldn't find a room where she could get the equipment and she couldn't get this. And we have all the equipment out there. It's a matter of just finding these resources and pooling them to one instead of having them sit there for months on end when kids can be enjoying them. And that's where I'm coming from, because I have nothing to gymnastics. I wasn't even good at gymnastics in any way, shape, or form. But there is a need, because people are going to call off Castigar. They're taking their money out of this town to support other communities. Where we could have it done in this town, we can maybe get more people involved. And at the end of the day, my biggest thing is getting these kids off these computers and finding other opportunities for them to look into what we have. And we need a group like yourself to help put together these resources so we can streamline it and make it so much easier. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Allen, would you like to weigh in on this?
I was just going to say that in, in the process, it'd be clear for us to, it'd be better for, for the community to, to understand the process. And maybe it's an element of our survey that we can add to this for the recreational services. But I think we want to make sure we don't duplicate the services that are potentially being paid for in the regional district. Because they, they would have better facilities and they have trained staff for this. If it was something that, you know, the, under, outside of their mandate, we would have to, like Director Russell said, we'd have to go and ask for them to expand on that service and then ask for them to potentially expand on that. Or council would have to look at investing into providing for the service. Because it will be, like, recreation is a big undertaking. I think that it's, it is a definitely an integral part of the community. But we have to make sure we have the professionals in place to manage it effectively. I think as a, as a community, we see this, whether it's a, you know, the fellow that runs the REC Center, he's very much trained in what he does and it's something that he, he understands those services. As we start to go into those things, it's important for us to know exactly what we're looking for and to have the facilities to offer them. Because, again, we, we don't have facilities that would be suitable for, for this type of thing. Whereas the REC Center might have, where there may be some long-term planning that we can come up with a recreation master plan.
Councilor Hammett.
I was already on your desk.
Oh, good.
I handed 10 minutes ago.
Then Councilor Butler, and then the gentleman in the second row. We'll have to just caution everyone, we have to pretty long this long.
I'm not sure how city council can, can help you in this. I know, I believe it or not, I used to be in gymnastics management center, I was in competition. But back in those days, we had a lot of school programs that provided that. Now the teachers aren't doing as much of the extracurricular and so it's expensive to join a gymnastic club. But I, I don't, have you tried, are you establishing a gymnastic club? Because the red tape, I can see, and I mean, it's a very expensive sport. It's extremely expensive and the liability. So I'm not sure what, what red tape you're jumping through and who you're having the obstacles with. I imagine if you were to rent a facility, you have members that are paying a membership fee that can support your, your rent and your overhead and you already have the equipment. Your biggest obstacle would be the liability. You already have an instructor. So I'm not sure where the city falls into this, so maybe you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, it's not just about the gymnastics, it's about the whole programming. And there's different crossings over and there is equipment that's lying there. Just a matter of having access to it by having a group that, the.
Who's is it?
I believe it's the schools.
Are, are.
And then they don't, because of now all the cutbacks, they don't do those things. So I'm just looking for a different way of getting the information out there or getting involved with different groups that allows this, this to happen.
So are you working with school district 51? Have you proposed this?
I haven't got that far yet. I have discussed it with them and I have discussed with the REC Commission and I have talked with Marcy Butler. There are some things in the works, but it would just be nicer to have a group that could help make these decisions. Because I don't have all the information. And it'd be nice to have a group that did have contact with the information so we could streamline it, to get the resources, to get the building, to get the permits. Because I don't know all the ins and outs. That's why I'm looking for knowledge from this group.
Let me just weigh in, I mean, this gymnastics is way outside the governance element of what we're discussing.
Yeah, it's just a small part of it. It's, it's just a small piece of it. I know we're jumping on gymnastics, but it's just to streamline it, to get more people at the table to discuss how we can get more.
Especially in relation to this document.
Yes, exactly.
Councilor Butler, if you have something to comment on. Please, let's speed it up as fast as we can. Yep.
So Brian Noble, who isn't here today, he was a director for recreation in Yellowknife. He also worked with recreation in Calgary. And he was one of the main spearheads of this project. His idea is that the city or the regional district be more involved in startups for programs, that we don't have volunteers running around town trying to organize things, but there actually be some initiative from the city and the regional district to help a startup of these programs. And then once you get people interested in the programs and you have clubs formed that take over those programs. But the initial startup to gather interest in different programs would be done by the city or the regional district. The staff at the REC Commission, or at the REC Center is always involved in the REC Commission's meetings. Tom Spredow sits at the table, Lil and Kim, who are the two main staff members there that handle all the phone calls, the programming, dealing with the city, booking the parks. They do a number of different things. They are also asking for this to be set up because they are overloaded. They don't have the extra time to deal with all these extra programming. So staff is very much involved in asking for help in this. The committee that we're asking for would be, I think, to be doing exactly what Mr. Allen was saying, and he's right. We need to have a recreation master plan and we need to have somebody sitting down to figure out policies, to see what the need is, to, you know, go out to the community to find out what people want. And staff is too overloaded to be doing all these things. So a committee needs to be formed to, to help gather this information and then come to council with recommendations on how to move forward. Because right now, we're hearing a lot of different ideas, but we don't have the time to sit down and make these decisions. That's what the committee needs to do. And from what I'm hearing here, I think this is something that needs to go to the regional district, that maybe council can send some sort of recommendation to the regional district or a request or maybe even just our rep to the regional district can bring this as an agenda item up on the next agenda.
Gentlemen, let's take a roll and then.
Thank you, Yourship. Nigel James again. Yes, in fact, Councilor Butler has really covered quite a lot of points I was going to make. The mandate for the Recreation Commission was written some years ago and is therefore, unfortunately, somewhat out of date. And when, I, I am a member of the commission and I think as I said, but when I want to try and get some other items going, basically, it cannot be part of the Recreation Commission. And the things that are really important at the raft race down at Christina Lake, I mean, that's really important. Where people go and try and ensure that they don't drown, et cetera. But however, we all have fun and do things. It's to get people out and get people out on their bicycles along the trails that we've got. But that is not a part of the mandate of the Recreation Commission as such, it's got to be done individually. But with this, a group, if there's a committee you organize, that would give a purpose and a focus so that these things could happen. Thank you.
Councilor Hammett.
So just a question to Councilor Butler, because I'm getting confused. You wanted to get an approval from council to send this back to the REC Commission for consideration. So are you suggesting, what was the?
The regional district.
The regional district. Okay, so, so are you suggesting that the regional district create this? That we're going to recommend to the regional district that they create this committee? Because from what I'm getting from the Rowley, you're not interested in having this committee? Or how is this going to work? Is it a city committee or a regional district committee?
Director Russell, and then after that, I think these kind of questions will handle in our briefing amongst councillors. Director Russell, quiet.
Just very briefly, so if there is a desire from the city to move ahead with this, then it would be a conversation that the city of Grand Forks and rural Grand Forks would have if we want to develop it as a regional district service.
Okay.
The request in front of you today, as far as I understand it, is a request for the city of Grand Forks to develop a committee to, to do, do these tasks. So those are two different things. But if the city's interested, absolutely, we can start the conversation to see what that would look like. But they would require development of a, a new service at the regional district.
Senator C. H. E. O., Mr. Allen.
So, Mr. Mayor, could I just, if, if it could, could I have a conversation with the CIO from the regional district and report back to council on that? Because I think right now, we're kind of caught into this, you know, we're somewhere between gymnastics and governance on this issue. And it's pretty broad. The idea that we're talking about here, we have to make sure we're, we're focusing on really what we're talking about here, not to get down to the, the outcomes of the, of the, of the idea here today. So if I could, and then I could report back to council in January on, and maybe the committee as a whole, maybe we could have a meeting with their CEO, just to understand this process. Because we're talking about potentially, it could belong to the regional district, it might belong to the city. We're talking about a committee that the mayor might instruct a standing committee or a select committee of council and understanding what that governance model would look like. The REC Commission that we've got to keep in mind though, it is a service provided by bylaw and it is something that's agreed upon under the regional district bylaw. They have a specific mandate. And I think we need to separate the REC Commission out of this right now. I think we really need to set, bring ourselves back to Councilor Butler's idea of recreation, some sort of advisory group in the community. I think if we can separate the commission out and we can talk about potentially what the REC, the Recreation Department of the regional district could, could provide us in relation to this. Because we would have to come back to council and say, "Okay, well, we need three more staff members and this is the cost. And then here's how we'll go about it and this is what it looks like." But let me have the conversation first, then I can report back to council, I think. And then that'll help bring, answer a few of these questions, sir and sir.
And I just concur with that. That is at the bottom of the, the motion that was made here, is that staff come back with recommendations on structure, membership, accountability. So I think that's a great idea, if Mr. Allen can go and speak with the CIO of the regional district and come back with some more information for us. Do you need a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, you need a motion for that to make, recommending council tonight to make that motion. And then once council makes that motion, then I can report back.
Okay. Councilor Butler.
So I'll put forward the motion to take this to the regular meeting tonight for council to make a motion for the CIO to speak with the CIO of the regional district regarding recreational.
Reservations.
To bring back information on recreational structure within the regional district.
Yeah, a second or a minute, Councilor Ross.
We, all within the regional district, we sit at that board.
All in favor, so carry. So, all in favor to receive. We already have the motion there.
The regional director, no other issues to discuss.
No, no, I'm the, to receive your report. There was a mover and a second, or so. All in favor to receive, to report from Councilor Butler, so carry. Moving on top, the amended item 4B from our regional director, Mr. Russell, your rising topics. Director Russell.
All right, thank you. I have a few things that we can touch on and recognizing, I think we're getting a little bit behind schedule. We'll try to move as quickly as we can. The first of those items would be a conversation regarding the potential of a community hall in Grand Forks. And I think we all know that that's been a hot topic for a very long time. There's been a lot of different initiatives that have gone into trying to, trying to plan for that and what it might look like. There's been a number of different feasibility reports and so on that have been developed over the last half a dozen years. Prior to that, probably more, but I'm not familiar with those. Wendy McCulloch here has also been deeply involved through the Community Futures Avenue in terms of trying to help facilitate these conversations. We've had a number of initiatives that have moved forward and then stalled out and lost steam. And so given all that and being able to build upon the history of energy that has gone into this, the, what, what I would like to ask is that council be willing to enter into conversations. Basically, I'd like to open that conversation about trying to figure out what that looks like, what, what the potential for a community hall in Grand Forks might be and, and, and move forward with that dialogue, regardless of whether that's a, comes to a yes or no conclusion in terms of moving that process forward. There was a survey through Community Future. Community Futures, just informal, went out to a number of residents to ask whether they're interested. There was an overwhelming number of people that said yes. I don't know if you want to add anything, Wendy, to that survey response specifically?
Not right now. I think I sent you all an overview of the process and what has taken place over the last two years. The survey had 312 respondents, of which 96% said that they wanted a community hall. The four or five percent difference were maybes. They were just yes or no. I have all of those and all of the information that was provided. I've heard from a number of people who were involved in previous activities with regard to getting a community hall in this community, and they've shared all this document with me, so I think I have it piled up. It's high right now. When I came here in 2006, there was a movement to do that. It was quite a bit of discussion around it, and then it was shelved and never re-brought to the forefront again. With the work that Community Futures does in programming and activities, I have three activities this year that need a convention center, or at least a place to hold them. I'm still going to get them, but they're going to be in the curling club. And it just isn't a suitable venue for the type of activities that we do around conferences. So Rowan and I talked about it and thought that if we could get the city to come to the table and open a discussion about it, that we could maybe move this forward in some way, shape, or form.
So, C E O, Mr. Allen, we on this?
So there has been considerable discussion, and our staff have been looking at it from just in a roundabout way, how could we potentially fund this? Because, as we, council knows, we're going through our asset management planning. Knowing that a community center is an integral part, just like Counselor Butler's motion alluded to earlier, there would be a place to provide some services potentially, such as gymnastics or something else out of a community center. The ability to do that would again fall under our opportunity to have, look at the feasibility around it from an asset management perspective. Council looking at the cost of this, there may be some grant funding available, but I think these are the discussions we'd have to look at. There would have to, if council decided to make that commitment, that's a bit of a shift in priorities. And we're going to talk about that later on today with council's strategic priorities. If council wishes to embark upon this, there's a considerable amount of staff time associated with going into this, because we're going to have to come back at some point and potentially ask the electric to borrow money and potentially enter into a service that would be shared, almost similar to what we see with the Regional District with the Aquatic Center and whatnot. But that's down the road. I think those discussions would be flushed out, and we would be able to understand that a little bit more in reports of progress with council, kind of bringing it up at these discussions. So if we were to have that discussion, you know, staff would enter into that discussion with the folks directed, and then we would continually bring back reports to council, if that's what council wished. But we will be talking about this a little later on in council's strategic direction, because you may find that you don't want to do this, you want to do something else, and we can talk a little bit more about this. There has been work that was presented, I sent out the package to council from 2006. There was a conceptual drawing. A lot of information went into this, and I think we're, you know, we're about two-thirds of the way down the road in this. Now we're just be looking at, you know, the operational costs. You're looking at a half a million dollars a year to run a facility. Now you're going to be talking about, you know, because there's going to be staffing and janitorial. I mean, all those things will come out in that discussion, and the programming you'd want to offer. And I think that would be a good conversation to have down the road, so council could make an informed decision. And I think the segue is the best way to get there, because it has been kind of mythical in the community for a while now. And I think it's been sitting out there without really any legs, and that would give it legs and give us a little bit more detail. Just to give you a bit of an idea, we've been looking at one site, and we're looking at how we can potentially support it with equal housing going in and around the site, to be able to fund the city's operational costs associated with it. So we're already looking at it, because we're looking at equal housing sites around some of the community, the community use sites. So we'd like to present some more information to council and to the group of the Futures and the law.
Director Russell, would you like to lead on?
Yeah, just a comment on that. You know, respectfully, I think that I have to disagree with the notion that this would require a change in the priorities for council. What we're requesting at this point is that council be interested in stating, be willing to state whether you're interested in further in that conversation or not. And at this point, absolutely, the ongoing costs of operating a facility like this are an enormous challenge, and that's clearly what presumably everybody is going to be paying attention to as we move forward. But so far, what we're requesting is that clear indication from council whether you're interested in having the conversation or not. And clearly, in that process, we would then move forward with development of a business plan and so on before. We have no site in mind at this point, that, you know, there's lots of suggestions. This is a very preliminary conversation.
Absolutely, Director Russell. Level of interest has to be established first. Counselor Thompson, and then Counselor Hammond, and the gentleman in the back, and then Counselor Butler.
Thank you. I'm interested in having that kind of a discussion. The plan that was put forward in 2006 was basically a Taj Mahal, which I don't think is required. But I certainly would be happy to sit down and have that discussion and come up with a conceptual idea of what it is that we're looking at, what we want to do, and if it's going to be a shared cost, or however it's going to work. But I do think we need to have that conversation.
Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, I think we're waiting on this before in discussions regarding the community center. And I think over the years, things have morphed. I'd like to see a developer come in, or attractive developer come in to build a hotel convention center, and be a real multi-use facility. I'd like to see A K B L Gs held here. I'd like to see your conferences held here, other events held here that we can start booking in and have it used annually, or look at a situation where, you know, they own the convention center, but the hotels are built around it.
So due to a degree, it'll be self-funding?
Not if we have a developer company that builds a hotel convention center.
From a developer?
Yeah.
Exactly. From not being an asset, the city will acquire it.
Yes.
The gentleman in the back, then Counselor Butler, and I will have to, again, we're really right behind there.
That's Johnson, U F T V. I won't go into the details of what happened in 2006, but what I can say about the experience that the city had back then is that you should be clear when you go in front of the people and ask them for support and buy into this, what it is you're actually going for. Because I do remember clearly that some people were seeing the efforts at that time towards a recreational center, and what they saw as the proposal, to them, it looked more like a community, not a community center, but a convention hall with almost no recreational center aspects to it. Not saying that that's right or wrong, it's just that unless you're really clear to the people what it is you're actually trying to get them to buy into, some people will think, oh, it's a rec center. Some people say, oh, it's a community hall. And other people say, oh, it's a convention center. And eventually, they'll all be disappointed to some degree if they're not clear. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I think that's a good recommendation. And I think also, we need to listen to the community and understand what they want. And this has definitely been a priority within the community for such a long time. It should be a specific on our S E P. And I think it does fall under the community livability aspect. And as we go through and make amendments to our strategic plan, I'd like to see this included on that, for sure.
Thank you. So Director Russell, have you anything to say in closing?
Can I just add one thing? May I comment, please? This year is an interesting year with funding, and there are a number of sources of funding. Normally, these activities or building these kinds of facilities aren't the problem. It's the ongoing operation of them. And with the kind of 150 and other grants, it could easily be available, there could be funds available to support the building of this type of activity. And the other thing with regard to encouraging someone to come, you can look at the Prestige, I don't know what it is, Prestige, Ramada, and Creston, which they were hoping was going to do it, but it still isn't large enough to accommodate the room when we hold about 60 or 70 people, if we're not holding 200 people for dinner. That's great. Thank you.
So may I have a mover to receive? Director Russell's. Director Russell? Oh, you have more? Go ahead.
Of course I have more. Again, I will try to be quick. I wanted to just give a brief update regarding the review and the update to the agricultural plan and the food security planning process. That R F P has closed as of Friday, and so we should have an announcement pretty soon in terms of how that looks moving forward. And that's going to be your plan as much as Rural Grand Forks' plan. So that's an exciting process that will start, and will go on for the next year will be the completion of the A Plan update. In a couple of years, we'll have a food security plan completed, and then we'll have a year of implementing the food security plan at that point. And in that process, we'll be designing, developing an advisory council essentially that will help guide that process. We should see stakeholders from a number of the agriculture and food groups in the community, in our communities, this is boundary-wide, be involved in that process. And I will just run through my list here. If there's any questions, feel free. As you know, there's a proposal to close two of the fire halls and to renovate and upgrade one of the rural fire halls, just as a reminder. That's the baseline to develop a stronger, united fire service between rural and city.
Just a quick question for you. The fire hall you want to update, who owns the land on that fire hall?
I'm not aware. We don't, as far as I know, all of our fire halls are on leased land, with the exception of our George Evans Fire Hall, which is the one at Hummingberg. So it's leased from somebody, but I don't know who the owner is. A reminder that the A K B L G, so resolutions that are due to A K B L G, so that's the Association of Cooney Boundary Local Governments, are going to be due towards the end of February. So if you have issues that you're hoping to bring to the province, and you want to have that endorsement from the Cooney Local Governments, then start thinking about that now, because they need to come to your council table here and then move on to A K B L G. That convention for 2017 is April 26th in Roslyn, so it's nearby, which is handy. And I would encourage you to make your plans for that promptly. Number six, there's the initiative that I think I've spoken to you before about is the Regional Agricultural Liaison Services, which is a request, basically, proposals that is currently still open. It closes at the end of next week. And that's from a partnership of essentially the, so the Regional District of East Cooney, Regional District of Central Cooney, and the Regional District of Cooney Boundary. So that is representing all of our local governments across the Coonies and the boundary, and will offer, is a quarter million dollar project per year, which is meant to offer extension services and business planning and development for agricultural enterprises across the Coonies. So that's an exciting project, and so it's early in the new year. We should see what's coming of that with the closure of that R F P next week. And that's, and sorry, Columbia Basin Trust is also actively, they're an equal share financial partner in that project, which is another, you know, pat on the back. I think for them to be clear, they were clear that they were going to support this, and recognizing that that was support for the boundary area, again, because it's a regional project, and they're comfortable and were keenly in support of it. Number seven, you will see a request, if you haven't yet, for some support, for some financial support for a regional drought management plan. That's a process that is coming out of the Watership Management Plan, and it will be for a relatively small amount of money, and presumably will be a productive thing for the City of Grand Forks as a water purveyor yourselves. And I'm not sure what the status of your own drought management plan is, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in. As part of our ongoing requirements for grant funding and whatnot, we're required to have a drought management plan. It would be to our benefit, especially when we're showing regional partnerships according to our strategic planning, that we do have a regional drought plan that works in, you know, we always talk about this with the irrigation districts and whatnot. If we can come up collectively and do this, it'd be a very, very powerful tool and help us get some funding potentially in the future. So that doesn't preclude us from our requirement to have one, but we can also umbrella. And participating in this would be a great addition for the city.
All right. We already have a drought management plan with the city, so I'm just wondering, now we're going to have to pay for something? Is there any way that we can just take our information and incorporate it without having to pay for something?
Mr. Mayor, our request to participate in the drought management plan will have immense effects on our drought management plan. So if we think about it in the silo of the city's own drought management plan, that's one way that we can look at it. But if we look at it from our regional partners and everybody around us working on these initiatives, it might change our drought management plan based on some of the directions. So I think it'd be, you know, there's a lot of information we've already got, but I think it'll help expedite the process, but I don't think it's going to be us asking to pay for a whole new plan, because the amount that we're being asked for is very, very minor. It's under $10,000. And at the end of the day, for the commodity of water, as it's always talked about, is we've got to do everything we can to protect it. And this will be a regional exercise in protecting it.
And it might be three requisite $10,000.
Exactly.
And to speak to that point, like as the C A O mentioned, it's going to be, the request will be for significantly less than $10,000. The entire project will cost presumably around $10,000. And so the request coming to the city will probably be in order of less than $2,000, I would expect.
Yeah.
And the leveraging of that funding is significant for the city, obviously. The real advantage to me is that what we're hoping to develop here is the regional word is important in that the water purveyors from across the boundary would come together and have some coordination in their response to drought. And so the idea is the regional plan would serve as kind of a template and would provide the foundation for all those water purveyors to fit their plans into, and would have separate, you know, the City of Grand Forks is obviously going to have some unique provisions in their own plan, and this would serve as kind of the overarching umbrella or foundation, depending on how you think of it, to deliver those plans. So the request for support from the city is essentially as much as a token of support for the process as it is for the financial.
The Columbia Basin Trust is putting money into it. I think that's great.
For the regional, for the agricultural extension, yeah. And, yeah, there's more to that story, too. That's for another day, when we're not in a rush. Number eight, that's my last one, was just a brief update on the Trails Master Planning process. And again, to remind you that this is the Trails Master Plan for the boundary, so it's as much your plan as the City of Grand Forks is a plan for the Rural Grand Forks. The consultants have been selected. They are just getting started. And as a kind of a reminder, we have, this has been developed as, you know, four-phase delivery. So it's a big process. And we wanted to make sure that there was a couple checkpoints where we could decide as the oversight for this plan, that we wanted to stop if we wanted to stop. So the first phase of the plan is essentially the research and analysis stage. So that's bringing together all the background information and so on. After that point, the consultant will come back to us. We would have the option then to say, you know, if this is looking like it's going to not work, we could stop at that point. If we decide to go ahead after Phase One, Phase Two and Three are bundled. Phase Two is the stakeholder engagement. So that's where, early in the new year, presumably, if we decide to go ahead with that, you'll start seeing a very extensive consultation process. And we have been clear, as all the proponents of this, that really, that stakeholder engagement piece, that's what we're, that's the main outcome. We want to come back, as similar to the recreation conversation, we want to be able to have a plan that we can use as a backstop for decision-making across the boundary for any kind of trails-based decisions. And that backstop has to be, we went up through this very extensive engagement process. This is what people said they wanted, and we can now move ahead, knowing that that's a sound reason, a sound rationale for that decision-making. So that engagement process will take place starting presumably in the next few months, assuming we get to that point. And then Phase Three is pulling all the data together and producing some kind of draft initial findings. After that point, then we decide, we may decide, okay, it's too contentious, we're not going to get a plan that's worth anything. If we do go ahead, after that point, Phase Four is the development of the actual plan. So that should be exciting, and it should be very public in the next few months and ongoing for the next year.
Counselor Hammond.
So one of the things that I've noticed is that when the province is funding for trails maintenance or trails upgrades, they will only do it if it's non-motorized. Toda, on the other hand, is looking for 150 contiguous miles or kilometers in order to provide funding. So they want to see multi-use funding, multi-use trails for 150 kilometers in order to provide more funding. So it's like, they're contracted by Destination B C, which is the B C government. So it seems like there's two arms of the government that are working at odds with each other, because one's funding it for strictly non-motorized use, and the other one won't fund it if it's not used for multi-use. not used for multi-use. So how do you work that and how do we ever overcome this obstacle of 150 kilometers of multi-use trail?
Are you surprised?
Frustrated.
I don't see that as an overwhelming challenge, I think. So when you're saying the province is not interested in funding those motorized, multi-use trails, really, you're speaking to rec sites and trails BC, right? As they're, that branch of the provincial government is not interested in putting funding into those trails specifically with the surface improvements and so on and so forth. I see, and I think probably most of us recognize, we have the potential, I think, in the boundary to have a really world-class network of trails that are non-motorized and a really world-class network of trails and routes that are more, that are open to motorized multi-use, right? This process is meant to help design what that looks like when we record. You're speaking specifically about the rail trails, and again, I don't see that as an overwhelming challenge from the province. As the presentation earlier spoke to, we have the, you know, rec sites and trails right now is coming to the table with a huge amount of money to, that's leveraged through the funding that's come from rural Grand Forks to develop the non-motorized piece, that's what they want to see improved, so that's great. We're going to see some changes there. The other, I'm also in conversations with TOTA about trying to help develop parts of the motorized piece, right? The Trails Master Plan should help guide our decision-making about where we should designate motorized versus, or multi-use versus non-motorized trails, right? That's the point, because we can't be the diviners of what the public wants for something as contentious as that. But I see that, I don't see there as a, it's contentious, I don't see it as an impossible hurdle to figure out how to move forward and develop those two networks.
Senator Ross.
Yeah, I went to a wildlife and meeting in Rock Creek about a week ago, and we were talking about motorized and non-motorized trails, and one of the things that came up was talking about, was with hunters and talking about wildlife and the lack thereof. And one of the things that came up is the fact, and I've talked about this before with forestry, is there's 520,000 kilometers of forest service roads that are active in British Columbia, and those are being used for ORBs and for non-motorized recreation, and we have them all around Grand Forks. So there is no lack, I mean, 150 kilometers, we have 520,000 kilometers already of, now that is being used for recreational purposes, for ORBs, four-wheel drives, four-wheelers. We already have it, we don't need, I think really we need to focus on, I really would like to see us more focusing on non-motorized trails because we have 520,000 kilometers, I'm going to say that word one more time, number one more time, of motorized recreational trails in this province.
Senator Ross.
That, the, that network is part of the motorized trail network, to be clear.
Oh, yeah.
So that's not at odds with what, you know, the, I think that's going to be a very challenging piece of the delivery of the Trails Master Plan, is the, to wade into that very messy water around the use of forestry roads as the part of the motorized network because of the, all the issues that are associated, there's been a lot of work involved with that. But that's been clearly, that's part of the process, so presumably we will be articulating that and identifying that moving forward.
So, Director Ross.
That's it. Thanks, thanks again. I think this is a, I think it's a really innovative, on the provincial scale, process to have us sit together and have this conversation, so I appreciate it. I don't know what the protocol is, there's a couple more pieces that I will stick around, but I'll move over there if you want to move over there for the next pieces.
Thank you, Director Ross.
Thanks again.
So may I have a motion, did we have a motion to receive? I think we did. Yes, all in favor. Anyone opposed? So carried. Did we have a motion? We didn't? I thought we did, I'll have a moment or a second. Counselor Tripp.
All of the motion.
Okay, Counselor Hammond, Secretary, Counselor Tripp, all in favor, so carried. All right, the next subject matter is a memorandum regarding the citizens' satisfaction survey update from our deputy corporate officer of communications. May I have a motion to receive the memorandum? Nelson Hobson. Counselor Hammond. Good morning, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I just wanted to give an update on where the citizens' satisfaction survey is and what the plans are moving forward. So we plan to start educating the public in the first three weeks of January, that there is going to be a survey going out. We will do a couple of pop-up city halls, as well as information on the website, Facebook, and probably in the local newspaper. We, we've already developed a survey, so it's mostly complete. As we've gone through a couple of more council meetings since it was initially done, we'll be adding a few other items that council has requested, so that will happen as well, and council will likely see the survey before it goes out. So the survey will be disseminated the last week of January, as planned, to a thousand households, randomly sampled households. They'll receive a letter, as well as the survey, and a follow-up letter if it's not, we haven't received as many as we would like, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor. To receive, anyone opposed, so carried. Our next item, again, from our deputy corporate officer of communications, subject matter memorandum regarding the wayfinding signage update. May I have a motion to receive the memorandum? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Tripp, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Most of the information for the update is included in the report, but I'd just like to mention that tomorrow night, the public and everyone is invited to come out and vote for one of their favorite designs out of three for the service standards for the wayfinding and entryway signs. Once that's done, we will present back to council. So here is, here's one of the designs. We actually, at council's direction, went to the Downtown Business Association, had a meeting with them, and developed a bit of a committee to help with some of the design elements. So I, we identified who we would like to participate with, we did that with the Downtown Business Association, invited all of the people that were identified and groups, had a workshop, and went through what we could work with and what their desire was, what they thought was important to highlight in the community in terms of businesses and amenities, as well as sort of how we wanted to structure it. So what you can, well, there's three designs up there, and those will be the three that the public can choose from tomorrow night. So that's here at City Hall, at, starting at 4:30 and goes until 6:30. So come on out, everybody, and vote.
Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I was really impressed with, there's obviously been a lot of work that's gone into figuring out what amenities are going to be put on those signs and where, you know, how are we going to go about doing that. There, with the designs there, they're definitely distinct, like each, each one, I think, is distinct. And I'm just wondering, I know that in the paper, that little ad was very small, so I don't know how many people are going to be able to get out to, you know, make a vote. I don't know if there might be another way that we could, that the information could be gotten out to the public. Derek's what is hat up there. Just so that we can get a little more input.
Come on in.
Post it back on Facebook again.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see this moving forward and coming to fruition. I really like the three different options. I'm just, I'm a bit stuck on that far-left sign there. It's probably quite expensive, and I'm just wondering about the information that's contained on it and the style of it. I really like the other two and all three options, but that big one, I mean, say a city center as shopping, that's kind of just a given, and I'm not sure if we're getting our value for our money for that one. I don't want to pick it all apart, because I know there's been a lot of work going to it, but I'm just, I'm not fully comfortable with that left side.
Is that shopping or is that a door sign for banking?
Well, that's a banking one, but the shopping part one, and restaurants, of course, the city center's going to have restaurants, so good.
Your corporate.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So what we looked at was coordinating, the main purpose of the two big, of the big signs, those are the entryway signs. Those are so that when you're coming in from the east or the west into town, but you haven't quite gotten into town yet, you know that we have some, we want you to get off the highway. So we're saying, we have a city center and it's not on the highway. In that city center, there's a grocery store, you can, there's, like, there's restaurants and cafes, there's financial, we know that people generally know that, but the wayfinding sign connects to those symbols. So the group actually identified what should be included under each of those main categories on those bigger entryway signs, and then correlated them to the actual wayfinding signage. So I know it seems obvious, but sometimes when you're driving into a community and you're thinking, I need a bank machine, you don't know where to go. And city center with a symbol of a dollar sign indicates, it's sort of universal, it indicates financial institution, and you're going to know that there is one just off the highway if you follow the sign to the city center. So, actually, Diane, if you can scroll, yeah, scroll, or maybe go back up, I think. Let's just have a look at the, okay. So the middle sign, there will be two of those as well, and they will actually indicate you're now at sort of the main hub of the community. So you've already seen the entryway signs, now you know, okay, here's a map, I know that I have to turn here to go, to get to downtown, and I know that there's a park around here somewhere and there's a visitor center around here somewhere. And we're hoping that that middle sign really speaks to people on foot and that have, will decide to park their RVs, and they'll be able to really see where everything is that they might need in our community. And really, the main goal of the bigger signs is to get people to recognize that we have lots more to offer than what you see on Highway Three.
I have a quick question. You had mentioned that these would be at the entrance to the city coming from the east and the west. Does this mean on the east side, is this the remake of the old expo site, or is the expo site being reworded because we had long discussions about artificial grass, lag, and not abandoning that concept?
So we would like to incorporate the two. So we, we know that council's desire is to maintain that expo site in some capacity. We would like to put one of those bigger signs there as well. We, I think in the first presentation that I did to you around the signage, we had a mock-up of one of the big signs. We didn't get the landscaping done, but that's where we would wait to hear from council to figure out what exactly it's going to look like in terms of the landscaping in that area. And then the other sign on the west entryway would go, it's sort of on the corner of Spraggett and Highway Three. There's already a municipal campground sign there, and it would replace that.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I actually like the lamppost.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the signs on there, because I think that it is just another visual, and people, when they're driving, they're going fast, and they'll go, oh, yeah, turn here, you know. But that middle sign, where would that be located? The one that is just the map?
So the middle sign, there would be two of them, and we're hoping that we could get one in the corner of Fifth and Highway Three in Gyro Park, would be one, and the other would go in the corner of the overweight parking lot, that is Highway Three and Third? Fourth, and fourth, sorry. So that, yeah. So that you can, I mean, one of the reasons we thought about those two locations was A, for pedestrian traffic, and the other, B, was for RV, RVs tend to pull off and park in the overweight parking lot. So we thought it would be great with the map for them to actually get a visual of what's going on in that sort of center core of the community. The lampposts were a great idea because they are already existing, so it's a piece of infrastructure that we wouldn't have to purchase.
Counselor Thompson.
Are we allowed to vote?
Yes. Of course. Please do.
Early?
Yes. Sure. I'll give you your daughter-headed vote.
Thank you.
Isn't that a conflict of interest?
That's why I asked.
One of the main reasons we talked about for the signage was for the RV parking, to get the RVs off, and I'm just wondering if that little parking symbol could have an RV so that people know it's RV parking, because I don't know if just the P sign is going to get those RVs to turn in.
Your CEO, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, that was discussed at the Downtown Business Association and also at the meeting, which I sat through, and there was a discussion of whether they would put that as a pavement marking in the road, so the RVs would be able to know how to kind of navigate, finding the RV route. So we were thinking about doing a little bit more innovative, so we could use existing infrastructure, which is some paint, versus putting a new, you know, something symbolic of an RV, but let the RVs know that there's a route. This was actually a really great process, it was facilitated by our deputy corporate officer, and it involved all of the business community folks that were initiated to participate in this, and they came up with all of this. It was all of their ideas. So this is, this is an important element of this, that's all their feedback. So again, that's, they were all very enthusiastic about having the options and then giving the, you know, obviously excited about council and asking the community to participate in it, so it's really a great process.
Lady in the second row, and then to Counselor Ross.
Gloria Cook, just looking at your signs here, I think there could be a directional sign, an arrow direct, direction, directing someone in the right direction on your lamppost that was bigger in white and bigger on the, on the red background, a little bigger than the existing panels that are there, so that your eye first catches the arrow that way to whatever is on there, and driving and so on might be easier to see, and your, and your big sign on the left, the top band should be wider in the red, I think. And again, you'll see that.
We'll come tomorrow.
Quicker, quicker, and the same, and the same, the next one down is the same thing. Make it a little wider, and your eye will pick up that red quicker there. Make the, make that angled part all red around the Grand Forks sign there. Like the red on the bottom.
With all due respect, those can be discussed tomorrow. Bring those opinions forward, that's what we're having it for. Counselor Ross.
I can't come tomorrow, but I think it's a great idea, I like the sign, I like what sets Grand Forks apart, which is we are, we're a community surrounded by nature, and it's what, I'm talking to young people who are moving here, they live here, they stay here because of our access to recreational activities that are naturally here, like the Trans-Canada Trail and the rivers, and the biking. And I think it almost, like, that sign is great, but I see that sign in many communities that I drive through, I want, I would like to see, almost like a, you know, and then we have our, what we call our natural assets, we have our wildlife viewing, we need a set of binoculars on there with like birds, and so that people know that they can go to, where they can go to view wildlife, to ride their bikes, where they can access the trans, like trans, you know, the TNT. Anyway, I like the sign. The only thing I would recommend is that somewhere on that sign, even a whole other row, it shows what makes us more beautiful and more unique than other communities that people drive through.
Thank you. One last comment?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. This is phase one. So the bigger signs are phase one, the wayfinding signs are phase two. And you can see that in each design, each sign is a separate panel from the other signs. The reason for that is so that we can add in, take out, change as we go along.
So we'll have more discussion on this later. So I've called a question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. My apologies that we have to rush along, but we are really running behind here. Again, from our deputy corporate officer communications, subject matter Strategic Plan Update, Recommendation Committee of the whole recommends to council to receive the Strategic Plan Update and further that Committee of the whole refers the report to the January 16, 2017 regular meeting. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Hammett, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Diane, can we bring up the other PowerPoints that shows the ideas that we talked about? So council, we had talked about updating the strategic plan that we undertook earlier on in the year. The strategic plan, there were some minor adjustments to it, but we talked about three key initiatives around this that we were, I'll just get, find out. But we have some housekeeping items in here, and under one, under the fiscal accountability, council asks that we will continue to retain our natural assets as a public trust. And we will blend our business values and social impact objectives through social procurement, which we are currently working on, bringing this forward. So this is the amendment. Under the economic growth, we'll develop a sustainability charter. So as part of our objectives, we are going to develop a sustainability charter that will be implemented into our work processes, so we continue to protect that. We will consider alternative types of business and diversify target markets and include not-for-profits from promoting land development. So again, you're going to hear some stuff that we just got the grant from under the Rural Dividend Fund. We'll be talking about that when we develop that process. Under community livability, we'll promote our excellent health services to residents and potential residents. And we will continue to discuss shared funding with the municipal airport, the BDC table. And then under the community engagement, we will ask the community the important items and bring them support resolutions such as AKBLG. So we'll be asking the community for that. But when we, when we did the strategic planning process, we looked at a, we did a review, and we had a PowerPoint here that we worked on with council. And I think some of the key, some of the key elements, rather than to walk through this, when we reviewed this earlier this year, in the last 60 days, can we scroll through this, please, Diane? Is there, do we have a? Thank you. One of the key pieces was, you know, we can continue on talking about this, but a strategic plan is the direction that council, when they're elected, would like to undertake. And there's some big ideas. Understanding the operations is about 70%, 75% of what we do, and then some of the ideas that council brings into play are some of the ideas that we look to implement. We talked about this, the Sustainable Community Plan, the OCP, so we're updating that strategically. Here's the process that we went through. We asked for the public feedback before council undertook it. We undertook the workshop in April, and we adopted the strategic plan in November of 2015. Fell under these four pillars, so financial, fiscal accountability, economic growth, community livability, and community engagement. The objectives and bringing the guiding principles together were developed. We came up with a work list of things to do in here that were going to be ongoing and continuous as part of what we do in the corporation. Then there was the big idea, so this kind of flows into the conversation we had earlier today. Strategic planning review. Does council want to borrow some money to undertake a significant paving project in the community? We talked about this, and council floated the idea because there is a substantial backlog of paving that needs to be done in the community, but this involves some costs. We talked about a community center. What does that look like? Does council want to embark upon this and make this come to light in the community from an overall perspective? And it'll help answer a bunch of questions that are out there. Or does council want to develop a multi-million dollar water park to bring to the community to be a destination point? And we do have some property up on the hillside that we could implement something like this, but make Grand Forks a destination and build ourselves around that to diversify ourselves. So we talked a little bit about that, and the idea about the discussion today was to put that on the table for the community to see what council was talking about. And then council will be making a decision tonight on this process, but essentially to hear the conversation. This is a public document. There is nothing outside of this that the community is not aware of. But again, coming back to the concepts, this is back to the infrastructure requirements from our infrastructure deficit. We know we have about between $35 and $40 million in backlog of work that we have to do. We could borrow some money to do an extensive program. We could look at this from a consultative process with the regional district and the partners in the community and look around, look closer to the feasibility of a community center and come up with a plan. Or we could pursue an Economic Development Action Plan, which would help diversify our community outside of some of the things that we current have, but this promotes the family values, the livability. Again, this was just an idea around this, and we threw together a little bit of a concept around this idea. We know that there's a couple of them that have closed down in the province, but they are coming back. Pictetin is just not going to get their water park for now. This may be the opportunity for that developer to want to look a little bit here. So again, these decisions are before council today, so we have the minor housekeeping items that were there. But it is in the interest of time, I just wanted to put that for council. So when we make the decision, thank, this flows nicely into the conversation you just had today on the community center. Oh, January, actually, it'll come in the January meeting, sorry. So again, that's for council to understand what we had there, and we can, there, have to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any question? All in favor? So carried. Moving on to our next item, from the deputy corporate officer communications, again, subject matter verbal update regarding the Boundary Economic Development Committee. Recommendation received for information of verbal report from the deputy corporate officer communications regarding the Boundary Economic Development Committee. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Hammett, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I'll keep this very brief. There were two delegations at the BDC meeting. One of them was Jessica Farahart from Imagine Kootenay. I'm not sure if council's familiar with Imagine Kootenay. It was previously called Invest Kootenay. And it's a regional website that includes the East Kootenay and West Kootenay Boundary areas. And it's a listing of businesses or lands for sale, so business opportunities. So it's good for sellers as well as purchasers. They've expanded the program to include, rather than just businesses, they've expanded it to include an attraction component. So they look at investing, connecting investors and opportunity holders. They look at working, showcasing a variety of careers and work opportunities throughout the Kootenays, Kootenay Boundary areas and individual communities. They talk about living, so advantages of the lifestyle, which Counselor Ross, you were speaking about. So that's sort of their, in a nutshell, expanded website, and I encourage you to take a look at it. The BDC pays, I think, $7,500 annually, and that, which is really nice because it means that regionally, we can sort of showcase what we have to offer and not just community by community. And it is quite expensive, so we couldn't necessarily afford it by individual communities. The second delegation was TOTA, and they were there talking about the trail strategy for the area and their plans for marketing and expanding the strategy. That was pretty much it in a nutshell for that particular meeting.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, and just quickly, I really appreciate the report, and I really appreciate having the minutes to know what is going on at the table at the EEDC. But I noticed in, and just quickly, the unfinished business of the, one of the meetings, they talked about heritage, heritage inventory website, the development, and that hasn't been done without an organization group taking the lead. Can you tell me, or can perhaps the mayor, has the Boundary Heritage Society been approached on this? And the reason I ask is because Les Johnson's sitting in there, and I wonder if they would even be willing to look at something like that.
As far as... As far as I know, they have not been.
If, I mean, there's a committee that is meant to be pursuing that particular initiative, and so there, I don't, I haven't heard a report back from that committee. I don't sit on that committee. And I would expect that once that committee gets functioning, they'll be exploring those kinds of options.
Any other questions?
I just want to point out that there was some discussion earlier this year with Vicky G. and the directors of some of the museums, and I haven't been party to any of the discussions since then. I'm not sure exactly where it's gone, but I know that things are in motion. This is something that takes a while to get going.
I'd like to thank our deputy corporate officer because you saved us some work for this evening on my report. All in favor to receive? Anyone opposed? So carried. Next item is 5E from our chief financial officer, subject matter write-off of uncollectible business licenses. Recommendation to council, direct staff to write off uncollectible business licenses for the businesses listed at the December 12, 2016 regular meeting of council. May I have a mover, Counselor Hammett, Counselor Thompson? Is there anything you would like to comment on?
Not at this time because this is...
Yes, it's going to the evening meeting anyway, so all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Again, to our chief financial officer, schedule for the 2017 financial plan. Committee of the whole receives for information, schedule for 2017 financial plan from chief financial officer. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
Not opposed, Mr. Mayor, but I could just put a point of something, and then you give a process.
Counselor Tripp?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I did want to just point out that on January 3 and February 14, both of those dates are COTW and regular meeting. And I didn't, I just wondered how the rest of council might feel about possibly moving those two meetings to another date because I know we get awfully exhausted when we have such large agendas and so many things to consider during the day. I didn't know if that might be possible, if we could pump it up to maybe the Friday before or the next day or whatever. I just wanted...
My apologies. That might be a good subject to discuss at our briefing, where we could hash it out along the length.
Do we have to pass it?
No.
No, no, just for receipt. Counselor Thompson?
I hear what Counselor Tripp is saying, but I personally, I was very appreciative of the fact that those dates coincided with the Mondays that were already up and out. And I have no issue personally with those dates.
Again, with all due respect, if we discuss that at a meeting, just to save the time on this.
And Mr. Ray, these are all community, the community's invited, so we'll be extending the invitation at last. So again, this gets the community, and we have a big gallery attending them, that allows the opportunity to be continuous as well. So it's nice to get people up for these meetings.
So all in favor to receive? So carried. Manager of Development Engineering Services, subject matter memorandum on the Sustainable Community Plan, theme to public engagement process. Recommendation council receive, committee of the whole receives for information, a memorandum from the Manager of Development Engineering Services regarding the Sustainable Community Plan, theme to public engagement process. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammett? Anything to discuss on this? Nope. Okay. Any discussion? All? Nope. All in favor? So carried.
Mr. Mayor, I can just come back to that just for a quick sec. I just think it's important that the amount of work that's going into that and the outreach, I mean, that was relatively glazed over, but that was weeks and weeks and months of work that would just end up, and I feel bad for the... It's like, well, that was easy. So it's just an important element, and we are continuing to go into the community with it. It's not diminishing your work.
Respectfully, that is not the case. Our next item is from our bio officer, subject matter memorandum regarding a property owner's opportunity to appear before council for unsightly premises. The recommendation is committee of the whole receives for information, a memorandum from the bio officer regarding unsightly properties. Over, please. Counselor Thompson, seconder, Counselor Tripp. Any comments, Mr. Al?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property owner is not present. Property owner in question here has subsequently cleaned up the property after receiving the notice to attend to council, so we're quite, we've closed that file.
So the problem has been resolved?
That's correct.
Is there any other? Well, we won't discuss any others. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Manager of Operations, subject matter verbal presentation regarding snow removal. The recommendation is committee of the whole receives a verbal presentation from the Manager of Operations regarding snow removal. Over, please. Counselor Ross? Counselor Tripp, we're on item I, 5I, Manager of Operations. I have two other items. From Manager of Operations. In any event, you should have a verbal presentation regarding snow removal. Okay, so I have a mover and a seconder, please. Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. So this is just to outline some of the process that we follow with our snow removal. So these blue roads highlight the priority streets that get plowed on a regular basis. They're our collectors. As for current policy, 1103, it highlights on the left-hand column what gets done first. So that reflects the map. And then priority two are city-owned parking lots, general residential streets. And then you go to priority three is cul-de-sacs lanes and alleyways. So this is one of the plow trucks that we send out. We send it out after two inches of snow, and it takes about two and a half hours to clear the south side and two and a half hours to clear the north side for just the priority ones. And if we send a truck out sanding, it takes about three hours just to sand the downtown and the priority streets. If we clear all the streets, it takes both trucks about two days to complete. This is just to highlight some of the sidewalks and trails. As the same as the roads, we have priority ones that get more attention than some of the residential streets. And again, listed for sidewalk policy, clearing policy, 1104, we have the priority ones listed, and then the priority twos are all the other sidewalks within the municipal boundaries, deemed most efficient by staff.
Mr. Mayor, on this, you'll notice that our policy says that we will still clear sidewalks. In the city of Vancouver, if you don't clear your sidewalk by 10:00 a.m. the next day, you get a $250 fine. We get to these as we're able to, but one of the things that's most important for us to recognize is this is, this is an area that, you know, residents are still expected to do something with their sidewalks in front of their property. That's the privilege of having a sidewalk there. We can't always get to them, especially when we have the big snowfall.
So these are two of the machines that we use, the Kubota on the right there. It's wide, too wide for some of our smaller sidewalks, but the older takes care of that while the Kubota does most of the trails. So to do the priority ones, usually it takes about three hours to get all of them complete, and then two and a half to three days, depending on the amount of snow to do all the sidewalks in town.
Is that the new holder?
No, that's the current one. So for the airport, things are a little bit different. If we get a medevac call, we go out immediately and clear the runway. Or when we have four inches of snow, because of the volume of snow, we go out there and clear it. So if it's weekend, if it's still snowing, all of that, if we reach four inches, we go clear it. Also, when we're expecting freezing or a change in weather, we'll go out there and clear it on the weekends. But other than that, priority two for the airport. So we have the one truck and then a pull behind room that does the runway. So that's a picture of it on the left there, and there's a plane there on the right that's similar to the medevac there. So it takes about two and a half days. So it takes about two and a half days or three days to clear all the runways, the parking lot, the taxi wings and surrounding area there. And then for the downtown core, we've changed things up a couple of years now. And we have some casual that come in in the evening and they pile up snow and then they haul it away in nights to follow that. So they pile it up in one night. And then it takes about two nights to haul it away to snow dump areas. There's some of our equipment that we use. We used to use the snow blower on the right there downtown, but that's basically solely used at the airport now. Then some of our challenges, we have some public complaints with windrows in the boulevards that interfere with driveways. We have some drainage issues in the downtown core that we're trying to alleviate. We have public parking on the boulevards and dead end streets, but has been much better with the bylaw officer in place and helping us out with that. The apartment parking downtown, because they park just on the side of the streets. So we try to give them consistent messaging at the same locations that they can see the signs and remove their cars from the streets to help us out. Continuing snow on staff holidays or weekends. Some of the properties that don't have street access and they're accessed through the alleyways. We hear about that. Some noise complaints in the evening and, you know, just having the backup alarms. But there's, it's a safety issue and we can't do much about that. So we try to prioritize away from the housing areas first. And then just some of the other ones, narrow sidewalks and wear and tear on the operators with the sidewalk machine. We call them granny catchers when they're going along and they hit and you get sudden jar with your body. So and then some, again, extension cords of vehicles, but it's been much better. Any questions?
Councillor Hammond?
I just want, when you're clearing the runway, do you have a de-icing liquid that you pour on there? Because I'm assuming that salt would interfere with the lighting here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We only use like a urea on occasions where we have been caught by the weather. Otherwise, when we go and we plow it off, we broom it off. Usually bears up within a few hours. If we're on top of it, we don't have to.
I noticed my street wasn't on the priorities.
You have to adjust the policy.
Any other questions?
Yes, Your Worship, thank you, Mr. Reed. What is the city's annual snow removal budget?
That's a good question. It varies, I think, for about 130,000 per roads and streets at about 35,000 per sidewalks.
Okay, so all in favor unless there's any other questions? Anyone opposed? So carried. You got a question, sir?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I look after a friend's place in the winter and he's out of town. I walked up to his place on Saturday and in his cul-de-sac and everything, they do a great job. All the sidewalks were cleared. But going up there, most of the sidewalks weren't cleared. That includes the sidewalks around city hall. And I didn't see any trucks working. So I just wondered if they refrain from calling people out on the weekends because of overtime or something? Just curious.
Mr. Reed?
We do try to limit the overtime on weekends. So sidewalks, if it gets to four inches, then we'll send the plow out. But for two inches, most people are able to walk through that, so.
Thank you. Okay, so the question has been called. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Now we'll do a follow-up on our next, again, for manager of operations, verbal update regarding the Headworks Grinder. So recommendation committee of the whole receives a verbal update from the manager of operations regarding a Headworks Grinder. Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. So this is a project that has been kind of ongoing and I've had a few questions from council of just, you know, where we're at with it. So I thought I'd give you a bit of a highlight. So this project, we originally got budgeting for, it was close to 200,000 with the U.S. dollar. So we relooked at it and changed kind of our scope of work on it. So the Headworks Grinder, council approved $175,000 to upgrade the system. So with the picture on the right there, they, you can see the snorkel coming down. That's the screener auger that takes out the particles that don't break down. So to get them out of the stream there. So this helps with the skimming and plug valves and a bunch of maintenance needs. That, the macerator that was there, the grinder, ran 24/7 from the initial operation of the plant. So this is intermittent and we're expecting to see the cost savings of 14,000 or 15,000 just on the electricity. So again, this is a picture of the grinder or the macerator. On the right there, you can see some kind of shiny teeth. And that's from wear on the equipment. We were a little hesitant to shut it off because we never knew if it was going to start again. Here's some of the aerator, one of the aerators that we pulled out, or the guys pulled out. You can see how it's bent there on the left picture and some of the material that they took off. So it gets really heavy and they have to lift it out and it bent the aerator. Here's one, view of the digester tanks and some of the stuff that's gotten through. Here's the control panel and top view of the auger. I think council's seen this video where the auger's running on the left there and it takes that material out and lets everything else pass through. It's a, it's a great video. I won't show it right before lunch. The secondary clarifier here, you can see some of the material just is starting to, you know, has gotten through and it's starting to go over the rail there. This was after we drained the tank this year. The guys had to go in there and deal with some of this. Nice work, guys. They took out 50 vector loads of material that had passed through the grinder and gotten into here. And it hadn't been done before in, on that scale. This is the digester tank after cleaning. Again, this is the clarifier and once you drain it down, you see some of the stuff that did make it through, so. And then we're checking the diffusers after we've, after the guys went through and cleaned all the stuff out. This is, we had to do it in two parts just to make sure that with the increase in water level that nothing happened to the tank or the treatment plant itself. So they drained the outside, they left the inside, the clarifier full of water just for wheat. And then they filled up the outside and then drained the inside here. So it was a good process to go through. The guys got a close look at how the plant operated and some of the valving and stuff like that. And here is restarting the treatment plant. And on the left, there's the Headworks. And on the right there, there's the aeration tank. And so we're going to do this, this process every five years. And we brought in a structural engineer and he said that things were in good shape. We do have some valving and a few other things to change that will get done in 2017. And then this project will be completed and off the books.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to manager of operations. I recall when the sewer station, or the sewer, whatever, was first initiated, we had to bring in a tank of the kind of bacteria that is required. Do we have to do that every time you clean up to that degree? Or do the bacteria stay in the area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It depends on how much you take out. This time, we did drain it right out. So we did have to go and borrow some, some bugs, we call them, from our neighbor. So we, we took the vector over to Midway and we sucked out some of their sludge and then reintroduced it into the plant.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Reed. May I have a motion to receive, please? Councillor Butler, councillor Hammond? All in favor? So carried. Okay, moving on to our last item K. It's the monthly highlight reports from department managers. Subject matter, staff request for council to receive the monthly activity reports and department managers. Recommendation, committee of the whole receives the monthly activity reports from department managers. May I have a motion? Mover, please. Councillor Thompson, councillor Hammond? Any discussion or any? All in favor? So carried. Moving on to, there's no late items. Question period from the public. Gentlemen in back.
Yeah. Once again, I want to talk about our water...
Did you able to identify yourself certain...
Fred Scott. Fred Scott. I was at a city council meeting several weeks ago or whatever. And councillor Butler made a suggestion that when we go on the water meters, that the sewer be a flat, possibly be put on a flat grade. And there was quite a period of silence. And then councillor Ross asked if we use the, buildings that are on meters, we use the meter reading for sewer rates. There was more silence. And then Mr. Allen went to Roxton Shepherd and got the answer. Now, I was a dummy sitting in the audience that knew the answer. And I brought my concerns to the city two years ago, Water Waterville. And I would think if anybody on council had looked into my concerns, they would have known the answer to the question. In 2003, when I go through the old minutes of our building, they had a, the strata council found out that they were paying almost double what some other buildings were paying. They brought it to the city's attention and within three months, the problem was fixed. Now, over the years, changes have been made. We're back to the same situation we were in in 2003, which I bought council's attention almost two years, the city's attention almost two years ago now. And nothing's been done. And from all the information I can get, it seems that you plan on taking another year to fix anything. So I'd like an explanation of what the difference is between 2003 and today.
To our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, under the Omens person act, we responded to the omens person. We're not able to speak of that document publicly because we responded to the omens person.
I did not mention the document.
Mr. Mayor, I just think that that's, we just have to respect that, the legalities associated with that. But as far, as far as the sewer rates, so we can, we can speak to that as part of the process of...
What can you speak to?
The sewer rates.
The sewer and water. I mean, we're paying between $5,000 and $6,000 a year more for sewer than some other similar buildings. And it's gone on for enough years now, I think it's in the 40, $50,000 range. I mean, if I, if I get the drawings to your house and build a house, set the same house next door to you, is it fair for the city to charge me just about twice as much for water and sewer as what they charge you? Second question, is it even legal?
Our CEO.
Mr. Mayor, so Mr. Scott pointed out this goes back to 2003. We've got a commitment now to review the rates and bring it back in as part of everything that we're doing right now. We're going to have the review, rate review back to council for consideration. The wastewater rates, we also agree that we need to correct that process within our community. But again, not juggling this stuff back and forth. We want to make sure that, you know, there was some decisions that were made in 2003 that are now need to, that now to be, need to be undone, but they were done as a bit of a reaction. And I think one of the things we have to make sure is we get this right. So we're not constantly dealing with customers coming in and saying, we need to change this one, we need to change that one. And every time we change something, there's a reciprocal effect. So we have to make sure we get this right. And the commitment is from council right now is, is that we are looking to get this right with the water rates analysis. Once that is done, the metered rates will allow for there to be a fair and equitable process. And the wastewater rates are going to be reviewed as part of that process to make sure it's a fair and equitable process across the line, which I can guarantee to council it will not be fair and equitable across the line because there will be some people that will be unhappy with it. And, and I can just, that's all I can really speak to at this point.
Respond to your second question, is it legal? We're not a law firm here, so we're not going to go to comment on that. Councillor Butler?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, from the speaker. Were you saying that your sewer, your sewer rates were based on your metered water rates and therefore you were paying a lot higher cost for sewer?
No, no. What happened was in 2003, they found out that building, similar buildings that were on a meter were paying a heck of a lot less money. So our building bought a meter and had it installed. And then in 2008, we were taken off the meter. The meter's still there, the city's got all the readings, but they're not using it. Like, I just found out about it a couple of years ago and got the rates and found out that our, our bill would be over $900 less every two months if we were still using that meter. Which our, our building is described as an apartment style building. And that's the difference between our water rate and apartment bill.
This being an operational subject, I think we would refer this back to staff.
Well, that's, you forwarded my correspondence to staff before. And I had, I got a letter from Roxton Shepherd and I've communicated with Mr. Allen. And our records are made by amateurs. Everybody has access to them, some of them are handwritten. And I don't have all the information the city has. Plus I got, this is difficult for me because I've got eyesight problems. But to date, nobody from the city has pointed out a mistake I made. I'm quite sure I have, but nothing's been pointed out that I've got wrong.
To our CEO, Mr. Allen.
And, and Mr. Scott, yeah, we've had several conversations. One of the things that is very clear to us is all of this stuff has been done, the rates were all set in the public forum. Everybody had the opportunity to speak to those rates. The rates weren't done in the black back room. They're always discussed at council, just like council this year will be discussing water rates. And then next year, you'll be discussing water rates. They are always discussed in the public forum. Generally after the fact is when we get the reaction, if there's something that is incorrect. I believe there was some correspondence that was sent out, but again, I've shared, we've shared the information. We have the report. We've addressed this and I can just simply say that we're working forward on this process. Mr. Mayor, the, it's, it's complicated as it is, the water metering rate process will structure. And it was evident by them installing the water meter, they already wanted the water meter rate so they could promote conservation and reduce their bill. We respect that, but we just, we're going to be, we can't reverse bills and then put in water meter rates because we're going to be back to where we were in 2003. And, and I do respect the concern of the customer, but we're also in the middle of this process and we've, we've already kind of accepted the fact that we are moving forward. So that's, that's where we are right now. If there's any further delays, I would bring it back to council and let you know. But as far as it goes right now, we're expecting to have a water rates report to council here in, in January or February. Very short, very short, very soon.
Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to comment that as our CFO published and council received the dates for the discussions on the financial plan. And that's an opportunity for the public to come and hear and comment on, on that plan. I recall last year, no one showed up, I don't think, to the operations. And it's at that time that the CFO will let council know whether or not we're going to have to have any rate increases in order to, you know, to cover the budget. So that again is an opportunity for you, Mr. Scott, and anyone else that wants to come forward and participate and hear what your council is proposing for the ensuing year.
Are there any other questions from the gallery? Seeing none, we move on to items... Seeing none, we move on to item 13, the in-camera resolution. Chief Administrative Officer. Subject matter, following the committee of the whole meeting and the long service awards, council will hold an in-camera meeting at, we're still assuming 1:00 p.m. Recommendation of the council, convene an in-camera meeting as outlined under section 90 of the community charter to discuss matters in closed meeting, which are subject to section 91a, personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality or another position appointed by the municipality. Section 91e, the acquisition, disposition, expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality. Be it further resolved at persons other than the members' officers or other persons whom council may deem necessary to conduct city business, will be excluded from the in-camera meeting. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Ross, all in favor? So carried. Now we move on to item 14, the long service award presentations, and the recommendation is prior to adjournment, a commencement of long service award presentations to city employees, the public is welcome to observe and award the presentations. A long service award presented to Daryl Nielsen in recognition of 15 years of service with the city of Grand Forks. Daryl.
I don't know if I had any awards standing, so I think something on this behalf.
Who is present to receive the award on Daryl's behalf? Especially if I'm on behalf of the city.
We'll get a picture.
Unfortunately, I won't shake your hand.
What do you call that?
Okay, our next one is to Shane Gillis in recognition of 10 years of service with the city of Grand Forks. Shane, come on up. David Reed, you get two today in recognition of 15 years of service with the city of Grand Forks. Come on up. Congratulations. And that concludes our awards. I'd like to thank everyone for being patient through our long meeting, which we had this morning. I highly appreciate it that you were so patient. Now may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammett, all in favor? So carried. This meeting is adjourned.